I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. All the board members are present in person and virtual. Move on to open forum. The board has always reserved time for public comment. Due to the limitations of attendance because of COVID, I will read the following statements. We have two tonight from community members. First one is from John Elstad. I'm not sure where he lives. There was no address. "We have had five weeks of COVID case data below the governor's threshold for full-time elementary, mainly trending downward. What we don't have is a clear plan for elementary students to transition back to school full-time, which is disappointing to say the least. The perception on my end is that reliance on real hard data has been replaced with speculation or projections on what may happen in the future. Outside of this, Scott County schools like Belle Plaine and Jordan are back in school five days a week at the elementary level. Elementary schools in cities that are more populous than Prior Lake, such as Burnsville, Eden Prairie, and Edina, are back at school between four to five days a week. The start of this school year has been very stressful in our household, between two working parents, a first grader, second grader, and a 15-month-old. We thankfully have the flexibility to do our jobs from home, but I can't help but wonder what it's like for those parents who can't. This outcome leads to kids with parents who have the luxury not to work to become the primary homeschool provider, with no choice for the rest of us. From our direct experience with families in 2020, this has led to additional costs for private care tutoring, quitting jobs, and expanded paid kids' company on off days, where kids are technically in school, but not receiving high-quality education. After watching the candidate forum, there appears to be a desire for equitable learning for all children in the district. However, our current policy worsens this gap between haves and have-nots, and works in direct opposition of the stated goal of high quality for all children in our schools. Beyond my wife and I, it's been our children's desire to go back to school full-time, starting back in the summer. I appreciate that everyone is trying to do their best. The quality of education just isn't there, and in-person school has been the status quo forever. Given the CDC's own data that shows COVID survivability rates for those under 50 at 99.98%, I ask that we move towards full in-person learning much sooner rather than later. My fear is that this has become politically motivated, especially given Jill Biden's speech from Jeffers Pond during a time when school was initially supposed to be in session. Giving a televised speech in our schools about schools reopening, while simultaneously delaying the start of school and deciding to start in hybrid learning, while also below our own governor's case threshold for full-time elementary, makes little to no sense. Just a few years ago, a property tax increases were passed, driven by the message that our kids' educations are paramount. As a taxpayer, I want to ensure that this pledge is followed through upon, and feel that the current situation is a major disservice to our developing children. I will be particularly disappointed if our school board and superintendent's attitudes drastically change based on the potential results of the impending election." John Elstad. Then the next one is from Kelly Hofarth. I believe that's how you say her name. Again, I have no address. I'm not sure where she lives. "Thank you so much for the opportunity to give public comment during our meeting. My question to the board and our administration is why are we not hearing more specifics about what is discussed during the meetings Ms. Stallow and other administrators are having with Scott County Public Health? Scott County is hugely spread out. Where are our cases coming from? And are they all from residents or related to large business breakouts, including non-residents? Bloomington had originally separated from the rest of Hennepin County and was going to go hybrid, even with the numbers that the rest of the county was reporting, until the union asked for an emergency meeting and they decided to go full distance. Why are we able to see these kind of stats for our district versus the rest of the county? And what is the source of the cases? Are these happenings in any school situation and linked to in-person schooling in any way?" "Everyone I talk to wants to see more data, and the minimal communication about what is being discussed during the weekly meetings is really frustrating for us as parents. Our children's mental health and social-emotional learning is being put to the side and not talked about. We are also asking our teachers to create two separate lesson plans each day. How is that fair for them? They have families too. And what about our high school students that maybe have two hours of work in any given distance learning day? How is this actually effective in building our children up for their future and the future of our community? How is completing homework the same as having a teacher? And what about all the many kids who have moved to the private schools in our area? How is that good for our district? And I haven't seen a breakout in those schools yet, and they have been in session for over a month. I urge the board to push to get our children back in school in a full-time, in-person capacity, any way we can. Please think about all of our school-age kids are missing by not having the opportunity to be in school every day, and consider how many parents actually think their children are getting the same level of education as if they were actually in person. I bet you wouldn't even have one parent say they feel hybrid is on par with 100% in-person, not because of the teachers, but because of what you're asking of them is not fair. To recap, if the decision is made to not pursue a changed learning model, please communicate more specific statistics and information about the meetings being held each week with Scott County Public Health. We have a right to this information if you are taking away the rights we have for our children to be educated. Thank you for your time, Kelly Hofarth." Those are the only two that was received this evening from open forum. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. However, before I ask for a motion, there's two changes on our agenda this evening. The first one is that there will be no closed session at the end of this meeting, so you can remove that from your agenda. And under Policy, in the Policy section, I would like to add a letter D and move C2 regarding Policy 204 to become Letter D, which will be an update on Policy 204. So with those changes, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So made.
Jonathan, second.
Second.
By Mary. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, I'll take a roll call. Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Can you hear me now?
I can now. Melissa?
Okay. No, I'd like to have the candidates for employment pulled out of the consent agenda so we can discuss those and have a little bit more background. Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The candidates for employment under 6C1, I'd like to have that pulled from the consent agenda so we can discuss that a little bit more, get more background.
Candidates for employment, 6C1. Okay, I'll put that-
Under Personnel Items?
I'll put that under Personnel, C.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Actually, we're in the middle of the vote. Melissa, did you not hear when I was doing a roll call vote? Are we getting good sound here?
I could hear you, but when you asked for more comments, you couldn't hear me.
Okay. All right.
It was a double mute situation, I think.
Enrique? We're in the middle of our vote.
Are we voting for-
We're voting to approve the agenda with the changes that have been stated.
Including the ones that Melissa stated?
Yes, but I think I need to have to go back then and make sure that you're okay with the motion and the second. Okay. Yes.
Okay, aye.
Aye. Stacy?
Aye.
And I say aye. So that motion carries 7-0. Thank you. All right, on our consent agenda this evening, these are items that are routine in nature and enacted with one motion. Under School District Financials, this is information that's always been available to the school board and the public, and they are listed as follows: Check Wire Transfer Disbursement Summary; Wire Transfer EFT and ACH Banking Activity; Bank Reconciliation Statement; Building Bond Investment Reports; Monthly Wire Detail; Monthly Health Dental Wire Detail; Monthly Check Detail; Monthly ACH Detail; Approval of the School Board Minutes of September 14th and the Study Session and Business Meeting on September 28th. This has been removed. Resignations as listed. Leaves of absence as listed. District Curriculum Advisory Committee Roster and Assurance of Compliance Report. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? By Michael, second.
Second.
By Stacy. All those in favor. Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
That motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Resolution of Acceptance of Gifts. We have gifts from Design Cabinets, estimated value of $70,000 for office furniture and cubicles for the district, and from Jeremiah Flynnix, Sanya's Hope for Children, 75 copies of Midsummer Night's Dream for the English Language Department at Hidden Oaks. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution accepting gifts?
So made.
By Enrique, second. By Stacy. Any other comments or questions? Hey, Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
That motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Now we'll move on to Laker Pride, and we'll start with Dr. Stallow.
Excellent. I don't know if my crew is here. Are they out there?
They're out in the hall. Thank you, Martha.
Well, good evening. Why don't you all stand right across the front so that I can recognize you and the cameras can see you? Thank you very much. Tonight, it is my pleasure to recognize for Laker Pride our Child Nutrition Services Department. Our child nutrition employees have been asked to reinvent the way that we feed kids during this global pandemic and have absolutely met the challenge and gone above and beyond. The child nutrition heroes served 370,702 free meals last spring and 119,628 since school began this fall, for a grand total of 490,330 meals. I'm sure that it's hard to even, like you do it every day, but to even imagine. That's half a million meals. Last year, the theme of Relationships Matter played out in real time, as I know you as a team connected with our operations team, the bus company, and our school communities to serve our students. Tonight, on behalf of our entire district, I want to thank you and your entire team for truly feeding our families, for ensuring that we're supporting our families during this really trying time, and for ensuring that students have the nutrition that they need during this time. I have certificates for every building, and I'm just going to stay back here for a second because I want the mic to pick me up. This evening, in addition to Child Nutrition Services Director Emily Malone and Assistant Director Jamie Anderson, Joan Freeland is here, Kim King, Kaz Kotoka, and Kaia Craftup. Oh, sorry. All from the amazing Five Hawks team. And we appreciate not only you being here tonight, but what you do every single day to feed our children, but to greet them with smiles and to love them and to serve healthy and amazing food with lots of heart and compassion, always, and especially during a global pandemic. So thank you very much. I do have some certificates. I know I can't shake your hands or hug you, which is really hard for me. And I believe you've got some photos that you want to highlight with us as well.
Yeah, yeah. Let me show you guys a couple of photos to just illustrate the unique way that we started serving meals once COVID hit. We've always known we were superheroes, but it was really cool back when COVID, everything shut down, but yet we were still working, and that idea of heroes kind of came out. And so I've always thought of them as heroes, but it was great to be recognized as heroes. Let me just figure out where the slides are. Okay. So we did a curbside meal pickup, and we also, you know, we've always had kids come to us for school lunch, or school breakfast. And during the global pandemic, we have had to meet kids where they're at or bring food to them. So here, we've got a couple of kids. I think it was Redtail Ridge. They rode their bikes up to Redtail Ridge and got their meals on their bikes and rode off. And we've got signs all over the district saying where we're delivering the meals. That is Gerald. He's from our operations team. He's our honorable lunch lady. We could not have done it without Gerald and the entire operations team. So he's just, he's so fun, and he's always got something spicy that he brings up to, you know, brings to our kitchens every time he picks up food. And then we've got these cute little graphics that we started putting on Facebook and social media to help kids, you know, learn their ways of picking up food during a global pandemic. Here's some more pictures of our heroes and just different ways. You know, one of the things that we had to do was turn our food production into really like a production line. And so in that bottom left-hand corner there is all these empty boxes, and the boxes get filled with meals. And in this case, these meals were going out of Twin Oaks onto school buses and delivered all over the community. So another cute little graphic teaching kids to be six feet apart. There's a picture of those buses, another kiddo with his mask on and some healthy foods. We've gotten a lot of praise and recognition from our community, which has just been amazing. So there's a little, one of the cards that we got. And then this one is just showing kids socially distanced. You know, normally our cafeterias are jam-packed with kids, and they're coming in, and we're just, you know, getting kids through as fast as we can so they can get down, or go and sit down and eat their meals. But now everything's slowed down, and everybody's coming through six feet apart. And we're serving the kids all of their foods rather than them choosing their own. And then that bottom picture is kind of hard to see, but that's some of the inserts that we put into the meal bags to tell kids what the food is and how to heat it up and how to make sure that they're eating safe food, you know. And that's it. So thanks for having us.
Thank you so much for everything. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay, our next Laker Pride or Showcase Recognition, I think she kind of fits all three. After the ladies are done talking. There she is. Okay. Every year, the Prior Lake Savage Optimists Club chooses a piece of art that's done by the high school juniors and seniors. And they purchase it and donate it to the school district. And this year, and every year then, it's also displayed in the district. And on non-COVID years, everyone can come and look at it. So it's all in our hallways. It's been going on for a number of years. Jonathan and myself are optimists this year, and so we're presenting this piece of art. And it's called Distance Learning by Keori Hirono. She's currently a senior at Prior Lake High School. And I'm going to ask Keori to explain a little bit about her piece of art. Tell us the medium and a little bit about yourself, maybe, and how you came up with this.
Great. So I'm Keori Hirono. I'm a senior at Prior Lake High School, like she said. So this is Distance Learning. I made it kind of around March, April, when the lockdown process began. And I drew it all in graphite pencil. So it was kind of a way of expressing my frustrations with kind of how we didn't really know what was going on at that time. So the reference photo was me about a year ago, and I felt like it kind of conveyed how I was a little bit confused with how everything was working out. So, yeah. Outside of art, well, I'm in National Art Society at the high school. And then it also involved a couple of other activities, like speech, mocktails, DECA, at HS. Yeah, I hope you all-
Well, I was part of the committee that helped choose that piece, and I'm really excited that you won it. So that's great. You won it, and we get to keep it. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. I can't shake your hand, but-
I'm smiling, you can't.
I can see your eyes, they're smiling. So thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to Personnel Items. Jim Corum, we'll start with approval of the new and revised job descriptions.
Chair Schimmick, board members, Superintendent Stallow, we have a few personnel issues to bring forward for your consideration. The first would be a job description for the Early Learning Coordinator. One of the things we do when we have a change in personnel is we review the job description. We did the same thing here. So it's a revised job description. As this job has evolved, which used to be just called the ECFE Coordinator, now it's called the Early Learning Coordinator. And so we made some changes there.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the revised job description? So made. By Mary, second.
Second.
By Michael. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Yes, Melissa. What's changed besides the title, Jim?
Specifically, I wouldn't be able to tell you that right now. I don't have an edited version in front of me. It was more about trying to, and Jeff, maybe you can help me out here a little bit, but we tried to combine some things and put them in there to be more reflective of what we see as far as the responsibilities when it comes to early learning. And because it's an administrative position, it used to be, when Rebecca started, it was not an administrative position. And since that time, that's been elevated to an administrative position. So if you want more information on that, I can sure get the actual specifics related to that. But a lot was about title and qualifications.
So no other major changes in the job itself?
When I reviewed it, I didn't see any major changes than what she was currently doing when she left. But it was old job description, like I said, prior to administrative licensure required.
Does anyone-
Thank you, Jeff.
Does anyone have any other questions? Okay, you have a motion and a second. Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
That motion carries 7-0. Secondly?
Sure. The second one is a bit of a misnomer. It says additional staffing. However, that's not necessarily the case. It's that the job changed. Laola now has a need for more special ed secretary time. They didn't have designated time as much before. And so what we were able to do is there was a reduction at Redtail for some clerical time, and that person, we shifted over to Laola to become the special ed secretary for one hour a day. So it was basically a reclassification. It was an additional position, I guess you would say, but we moved someone over there, and it's a zero cost to the district.
Okay, do I have-
Go ahead.
Do I have a motion to approve the staffing request as described?
So made.
By Jonathan, second.
Second.
By Mary. Any comments or questions? Mary?
I have a quick question. When you said an hour a day, I was kind of curious about that, too. Did they, is that person going to drive over to Laola de Lago and back and forth? But how does that work for one hour?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we might be able to get creative if we look down the road and see if we can maybe move those hours around as need be. But to get started, that's what it would be.
Primarily like start one place in the morning for an hour and then move over just to help with the? Okay, that made sense. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
That motion carries 7-0. Then what was pulled off of our consent agenda, our Candidates for Employment. And Melissa, you had requested that. Do you want to ask your question?
Yeah, just to have more background on the Candidates for Employment in terms of how we're adding how many new FTEs for frontline teaching and the cost of that?
Yeah. As far as if there were specifics on there, I didn't have those questions, but I can tell you generally, looking at it, the majority of those positions are, there is no ads that I'm aware of. These are all current allotments that we have, in many cases, held off on filling in Kids Company, Child Nutrition, or we just couldn't fill them. Until recently, we've been able to do some more hiring. The teaching ones that you see on there were either a late retirement, sorry, a resignation in August that we allowed them out of their contract because we found a suitable replacement, or they were the authorizations that the board approved when we asked for additional FTEs in elementary prior to the start of the school year in order to accommodate Distance Learning Academy and the hybrid model. So if your question is, are there extra ones on there that the board didn't approve? I do not think so. All of these were either approved and hired, or they were existing positions that we are now filling. Many of the positions in Kids Company and in Child Nutrition, we actually, they were allotments that we didn't post for, even though they were open positions, allotments that we didn't post for even though they were open positions because we were concerned about if the dial changed quickly, those hires, we just wouldn't have worked for them right away. And now that we've somewhat settled in, we've tried to hire some of them, knowing that no matter what happens, we believe that there would be no reason we wouldn't be able to keep everybody working. So we still have more positions that are there that we haven't filled yet, just as a management tool. And we rely on kids company and Emily and her staff and child nutrition to tell us what works for them and what they need in order to make it work.
Do I have a motion to approve the candidates for employment? So made.
Second by Mary.
Second by Stacy. Any other questions? Mary?
I just want to say, we still have quite a deficit, particularly in certain areas like PERS and things like that, right, Jim?
We still have, yeah, we would be able to hire custodians, PERS, kids company, child nutrition, just about every area except for licensed staff.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hey, Mary?
Hi.
Hi, Jonathan?
Hi.
Melissa?
May.
Enrique?
Hi.
Stacy?
Hi.
That motion carries six one. Thanks, Jim. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business with the construction update. This is a report only, so there's no board action.
Good evening, Chair Shimick, School Board, Dr. Stallow. I'd like to go through just a quick progress report as reported to the Facility Committee last week. We did add a couple more pictures, updated the PowerPoint a little bit for the benefit of the board. So here's some pictures of Twin Oaks. I don't know, I wonder if everybody's been through that space, but it's really a beautiful space. You can see skylights were added, a lot of lighting, some really useful breakout spaces and the classrooms. Thank you. High school kitchen, we're still working out a few. I'm trying to come up with the right word because bugs isn't right, kinks isn't right. So I'm trying to figure out, we're still working through the opening of that kitchen. The food, child nutrition staff's doing a great job there. It's really, if you remember what they had and what they have now, it's a great space for them. Here's some of the commons and kitchen servery. See, it's really updated, a lot more room, and not quite as cramped as it was. Another servery picture. A shot of the learning stairs. Weight room, activity centers, as you're coming from the main office into the activity center space. Interior of the activity center. Ongoing construction at the high school is Tower D, so it's a science and fine arts wing. It's the last piece of the high school and our construction, and that should open December 18th, projected to open December 18th. There's a shot of the new loading dock area. Interior receiving. Hamilton Ridge, this is a great shot. I remember this morning, I had several pictures from people, the sky was just beautiful. But Hamilton Ridge really turned out nice. It's beautiful, beautiful school site. Some interior shots of Hamilton Ridge, learning stairs, hallway from the main office. Classrooms. Breakout spaces. This is a nice feature at Hamilton Ridge. We have actually, where the kids, children get off the bus, there's a mudroom so they can leave their boots and coats and backpacks behind so they're not tracking the whole building. Really, it's worked out well. Playground, I worked with Karen on that. That's designed by Karen and her staff, and it's a project for that site. Greenwood, another transformational space, just unbelievable the changes there. It's open, light, airy, really, really changed. One of the projects that the operations staff took on this year was to repurpose lockers. On your left are the old lockers, the original lockers of that school site. We had an excess of high school lockers, and so we were able to get them in and replace. We still have some to go yet, but it really turned out nice. So if you remember what the old boilers looked like at Greenwood, they were monsters. This is our boiler plant now. Greenwood Kitchen, another great update. If you remember their kitchen, it was awfully small, too. Cafeteria. And where we load into the lunchroom, there's a hand wash station for kids to wash their hands, really nice, extra windows in the cafeteria. We added an exit to the playground from lunch, so it's adjacent to the lunchroom so that easier for children to get outside before lunch. And that's our photos for this construction update.
Looks awesome. Did anyone have any questions? Mary?
Jim, could you give us a little more detail on the high school kitchen? Are we serving from there yet?
Yes, we are serving.
Okay.
Yep, we're open and operating. But it's, you know, it's a large kitchen, and there's minor things that we're working through right now.
Are we having any issues due to, obviously, the pandemic slowed a lot of shipping of equipment and things like that down? Are we still waiting for anything, or did that all come in now?
I think we're in pretty good shape for construction. We do have supply chain issues, though. But it's not upholding, it's not holding up construction.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks for your hard work, Jim.
Thank you, Melissa.
Okay, we'll move on to the Ready to Learn Plan implementation. Dr. Stallow and group, I think.
Yes, I have very, I have many colleagues with me today, so folks will be coming in and out of this presentation. As, thanks, Jeff. As Jeff pulls up the presentation and really that opening slide that you will see, shows the pride and joy in what we do as a district and reminds us that even in a global pandemic, perhaps with greater urgency during a global pandemic, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. And while these pictures ground us in our why, and we are so grateful to have students in school, I want to be forthright and remind everyone that this is very difficult, demanding, and challenging work for every single one of our employees. Our staff continue across the district to go beyond the call of duty, and I know they are tired. They're doing things they've never done before. Things are taking three times as long because there's so much consideration and extra work that has to be done, and it really is stressful, and I know it is demanding on everyone. I want to share my deep appreciation to our staff who continue to step up and lean into the hard work in order to best serve our students and our families and our community. I know that it's not going to get easier, and I will continue to request from the board, from our community, from our families, and from one another, a spirit of teamwork and the ability to show care, empathy, and support one another. Our staff are truly outstanding individuals, and they are working really, really hard, and we are working really, really hard to support them. So I just want to remind everyone of that. The outcomes for this evening, we'd like to review the Ready to Learn Plan and show, review again some of the indicators about if we were to make a learning model change, what would that would look like. We also want to talk just a little bit about some of our ongoing adjustments and considerations. And then finally, we want to give an update to you on the learning model change request and the process that we're using to prepare us for second quarter. So first of all, with the Ready to Learn Plan, just want to remind you that, you can go to the next slide, thanks so much, Jim. The guiding principles throughout our entire planning process were that we wanted to ensure that learning environments were safe, we wanted to ensure that students had as much time in school as possible, and then we wanted to plan with flexibility and additional time to support individual learning needs. And while there may be varying perspectives in how those guiding principles are implemented, those are the things that we continue to come back to. Our board approved the Ready to Learn Plan as our master plan in all of the learning models, and it also contains planning around each of the topics that you see here. One of our major priorities as a district is to assess and monitor and prove, and you'll hear throughout the evening, the many ways that we've already been doing that. We're working hard to listen to our stakeholders and to make changes as we need to, but to also be able to provide stability to our families. We've established indicators around some of our model operations, and then, as I said earlier, we'll talk more about when those changes take place. We also wanted to just remind you of our website and all of the information, including FAQ and all district emails are all there. So we know that there's a lot of information there, and we also know that families receive a lot of information from their teachers and their principals, but we wanted just to remind people that the work is archived there. Just a couple updates from our departments. We just had a chance to celebrate our child nutritious services staff, and they wanted to remind everyone that our meals-to-go pickup times for school meals will continue each Wednesday from 10 o'clock to noon, with the exception of this week, which is MEA break. And also a reminder to parents that if you've ordered meals, please remember to pick up your meals on Wednesday. Next update is from Jim and HR.
So some of the indicators that we look at, and I wanted to bring them forward to you, are to look at some trend lines that we look at for the incident command. These are three of them. We added a fourth one here, changed a fourth one to give you an idea. So when we, during the incident command briefing, we look at this in a whole lot more detail, but if you look at this, it gives us sort of a graphical or visual picture of where we're at, because as I've said, for many meetings on this subject, the COVID Scott County numbers tell us what we can do, and staffing ability capacity tells us whether we can do it. And so from my perspective as the HR guy, that's really what we're focusing on. So we look at the number of leaves or accommodations that are fulfilled, because those people either can't be in the building or they aren't working, one of the two. How many open positions we have, and you can see both of those numbers have continued to go up. As I mentioned earlier to Melissa's question, we opened up a lot of jobs that we were not filling because the need was definitely there. As leaves go up, we can only maintain so long without hiring some of those authorized positions. Some good news, last week, initially, when we looked at it, as daily staff absences were down, the trend was definitely upward quickly. Last week, they went down. However, this week, we added a new graphic because what we're really concerned with there is really how many people are in the building, including subs. So the bottom right-hand corner, if you take a look at that one, the blue line is the subrequests, and the orange line is the filled requests. And so what you see is although absences went down, the actual number of unfilled positions from subrequests went up, or they went down as well, but there was a larger gap there, right? So there were 41 unfilled positions two weeks ago, and there were 47 unfilled positions last week, even though the absence requests for subs went down. And that tells us then that we, I mean, the principals were working magic in their building last week, many times trying to fill open positions any way they could to make that happen as exposures happen and people need to be quarantined and that sort of thing. That's what we're wrestling with. So we're really trying to dial in the numbers to give us a real accurate picture of where we're at and really how many people are available to work. And is that just at home, or is that also in the building? So.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
Good evening, Board Chair Shimick, Dr. Stallow, board members. What you see before you is the Minnesota Decision Tree. I know I've shared it with you before, but this has been a very important document that we use for our families, for our staff. We've done a lot of training around this, and I really wanted to point out a couple different things related to this because it actually affects many of the things that Jim just mentioned. As you see there, there's three different rows describing a situation where our staff members and our family each day go ahead and do a daily self screener. And if someone is displaying symptoms, they need to go to this decision tree and determine what are their next steps. The top row is for someone who has one of the less common symptoms, which is very similar to what our families have done in the past. Anytime that a student has one minor symptom, is determining whether or not they're able to go to school, determining if they should stay home, but it's not necessarily COVID-related. When we get to the middle row is where it gets a little more challenging for families and for our staff, because when we get to that middle row, that's where we start to have situations where an individual has one of the more common symptoms of COVID or two of the less common symptoms. And when that happens, that individual needs to stay home. Now, the challenging part is that for anyone related to schools, youth programs, childcare programs, the other members of their family also need to stay home. So for example, I have a family of three, and if one of my children was to be in that middle row where they have two of the less common symptoms or one more common symptom, all three of my children would need to stay home. The other challenging thing for our employees is that because we work within that school system, we as employees also would need to stay home. So in the situation I just gave with my child, I would need to stay home as well. And so we have, for example, I know talking to Dr. Bezek this morning, he had six staff members that between yesterday and today reached out to him and said that they needed to be home today because their child developed symptoms yesterday and today. And so it really puts us in that difficult position that Jim Corum was just mentioning. The next thing I'm going to talk about is that idea of if and when and how we get the opportunity to change the dial. We know that we're currently in that hybrid model. As Jim mentioned, we look at the Scott County number rates and work with Scott County Public Health to see what is possible, and then we need to go ahead and see what are we able to do within that. There are some different things that we look at in each meeting that we have with our incident command. So even before that, on Thursday afternoons, Dr. Stallow and I have the opportunity to meet with all of the Scott County school districts as well as members of Scott County Public Health, and they give us a variety of information. The first and foremost that they give us is that two-week case county data. The second thing that we talk about at that point is actually going to something that someone mentioned in the open forum today in a phone call I actually had with a parent today was, when you're looking at that, are there cases of one large outbreak? Is there a super spreader event? We ask those types of questions, and Scott County Public Health shares that information with us. I can tell you that in all of the weeks that we've been meeting with them so far, the answer's been no, there has not been one large event or one concentrated area so far. All of our cases have been continuous county spread. There hasn't been one individual event. After we do that, then we come back to our team, our incident command team, and we go through a variety of things. Jim just mentioned the staff coverage. We look at student attendance. We want to see how is our student attendance at each of our buildings looking compared to what we've done in the past? And so we look at the percentage of students that are present because we can compare that to where we have been with past years. We have Jim Delwo and Maureen Mullen share with us where are we at from a health and safety standpoint as well as operations? Are we able to staff? Do we have the appropriate PPE? We look at childcare. We look at our child nutrition services, and how are we able to staff those areas? When the time comes, because I'm going to be optimistic because we all want to get there, when the time comes that we are able to change the dial, we know that you as a board have approved our Ready to Learn Plan. We know that you have passed the resolution that gave the superintendent the ability to move that dial if and when it is needed to. And so the process that works, as already described at the Scott County meeting, I've already described the incident command, we actually work also with our regional support team where we get public health officials, not just from Scott County, but across the metro area, and they help us look at, are we missing anything? As we explain what we've discussed in our incident command, are there other pieces of information that we need to be thinking about? And they really kind of help us fill in any gaps that we might have. The next is communication. Our goal, our hope would be, depending on the timing, that we would be able to share with you, the board, what that plan is and what the next steps are. But we also understand that there are going to be times which unfortunately, that timeframe doesn't allow for that to happen. At that point, then, we would look at our calendar, see what we need as far as transitional days. Do we need some days built in to help our staff to transition to that in-person learning or transition in the other direction? And then lastly, getting that information out to families and then beginning that new model. This is the parameters of the models that we've described before, and we still are, I'm going to share you in just a minute, we still are in that middle range for hybrid learning for all students. This is the most up-to-date Scott County data that we have. What was released last week, state data on Thursday, is that Scott County, for the week ending September 26th, had a number of 24.83. Now, that was an important date because that signified two full weeks of our students being in school. So that was the first full incubation period of COVID that our students had been in the building. And so that put us at a number of 24.83. At that time, and until we get new, more updated data still, but at that time, Scott County has the highest case rate of any county in the entire seven-county metro area. When you look at that, you see there, it does slightly dip down at the end. The preliminary numbers that our Scott County Public Health officials gave us for the week ending October 3rd, and so we will get a more concrete, solidified number this week, but the preliminary number they gave us was 21.9. And I say that as an at least 21.9 because the Scott County Public Health officials remind us it takes about seven to 10 days for all of the cases to be entered into the system. And so we know the number will not be lower than that. It could potentially be a little bit higher than that. The last thing I wanted to touch on was, beginning October 2nd, the Minnesota Department of Health began on their website to release weekly school data. They release the number of cases that there are across the state as far as students and staff who have been dealing with or have been tested positive for COVID. They go ahead and they break it down into, they give a number, a composite number of how many schools have only one case, how many schools have two to four, and then how many schools have five or more cases within their building. The buildings that have five or more cases are named out specifically and called out on a list. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools currently does not have any schools that are on that list. To provide you an update, with our cumulative number, we have had 10 positive To provide you an update, with our cumulative number, we have had ten positive cases so far of students and staff combined. A school that is put on that list with the Department of Health stays on that list for twenty-eight days. It's two incubation cycles. If they have not had a new case in that twenty-eight days, then their school, the school building's name is removed from that list.
Thank you so much, Joe. As you can hear, Joe is doing a fantastic job as our district COVID coordinator and working really closely with our leaders and our staff across the district. The next few slides, we're going to talk just a little bit about some of the adjustments and considerations that we have been talking about as we move forward. One of the things we want to pay attention to is while we develop plans throughout the summer, certainly as we begin implementing plans, we're going to learn a lot and continue to change things as need be. I wanted to let you know that last week I had an opportunity to meet with all of our building principals for their fall goal-setting meetings. And one of the questions that I asked and one of the expectations that I have moving forward is I asked them, how's it going and how do you know? How's it going for staff and how do you know? How's it going for students and how do you know? How's it going for parents and how do you know? So every one of our principals was able to share, mostly in really informal ways right now, how they're learning, how they're having conversations and observations and doing some surveying and working with their built teams and their learning teams and at staff meetings, doing some exit tickets and PTCs and emails and phone calls with parents and conversations to to really assess how things are going and how they know. And we'll continue to talk about and look at more formal ways for collecting this at the site level as well as the district level as we continue to move through the process. Also gotten a couple of questions. You know, our parents, especially parents with multiple children, are getting many emails throughout the day from our teachers in our schools. And last spring, we instituted a protocol and requested that our staff use a similar email subject line where they include the grade and the class or the subject or the teacher name for elementary, just to help parents navigate some of these communications a little bit more. So we asked principals this week to remind their staff of those protocols and hopefully that will help parents as they're supporting their their children and navigating this work. One of the big changes that came about was last Thursday, there was an update from MDE and the Minnesota Department of Health with some guidance change around indoor sports and concerts, plays, competitions, and performances that have spectators. Originally, they had said when they allowed volleyball to happen, they had said that there would be no spectators and now they are allowing a total of two spectators per participant. We still must be separated by by six feet and the event space can't exceed twenty-one percent. No venue can exceed two-hundred-and-fifty. Districts, school districts must require advanced reservations or ticketing and must have reservation lists for that. So that's one of the changes and we are looking forward to letting our our parents see our kids in live in action as we move forward. There was another another statement on the the guidance that talked about public schools being used by outside users by using our facilities. And certainly, we also have many of our outside users and partners use our facilities. And as you know, we have made some decisions for first quarter that we were not allowing in the indoor outside users to use that space. And I want to speak on the next slide and I'll have Jeff help me a little bit on the next slide with some of the challenges to that right now. First of all, I just want to remind everyone that that our priority is to make sure that our students can can stay in school. In order for that to happen, we have enhanced cleaning protocols that require our staff to cover shifts that they normally would at night, do more of that work during the day. We also are expanding our building hours to go a little bit later as more of our school activities open up, which is going to put some strain on our staff. And as we heard Jim talk about earlier, we do have custodial staff who are either on leave or out with illness and we have positions that that are posted. It's also important to note that because of COVID-19, the use of our facilities looks a little different because of our pod system. We have to spread kids out and use more of our facilities right now than we have in the past. We also have, our Blue Gym at the high school is used as a full-time classroom where students meet in order to work with teachers that are are teaching entirely online. So just wanted to talk to you through some of those challenges. Then I'll ask Jeff to share a little bit more about the process that we're using to continue to to determine when when and if we can open that space. Thanks, Jeff.
So from my, oh, good evening, everyone. Board Chair Schimmick, members of the board, Dr. Stallow. You know, there, as far as looking at facility use for outside user groups, we have been meeting, as Dr. Stallow mentioned, just looking at certainly capacity, capacity relative to to students coming into the buildings and then also expanding that. And and that does have an impact on our ability, number one, cleaning and preparing, but also making sure that we have enough space in order for students to to learn. And then also relative to to comply with all of the the guidance from the Department of Education. And so we met last week, just specific to the high school, talking about the State High School League and looking at some of the the things that were coming from the high school league, how we would plan, how would we prepare? And it quickly became a larger conversation. I mean, our our facilities in the district in the non-COVID times are used twenty-four seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days of the year. You drive by every elementary school on the weekends and their and their basketball is there during, you know, again, not now, but during pre-COVID times. So, you know, it's one of the hallmarks of of every community is that there's a lot of community pride in the schools, schools being the center of the community and and community groups using them. And that that has been a challenge when we've said no, currently, right now, with our goal of, again, keeping kids in school. And then also, and I'll be talking a little little bit later in this presentation, around families wanting more days in school for their children or children coming back to school from DLA and entering into the dial like we had mentioned for quarter two. And so with Minnesota State High School League and working through the sports that have been added, that is going to increase the amount of space that we're going to be using in facilities, requires a lot of planning, preparation. We will be extending the hours in order to accommodate all of those district requests for practices and and that that has to be a bit choreographed. That has to be a a well-thought-out effort so that we have coverage in order to clean the spaces, but then also to ensure that athletes, coaches, participants are following all of the guidance that they need to to stay safe. We also have to ensure that if someone does come into contact with somebody who's positive, that decision tree or that decision tree that that Mr. Kubushek went over would also extend then into activities. And certainly with activities, we're beyond A-days and B-days and DLA students. You know, so there are some complexities to it that as we continue to to navigate this, it's it's not just to, we'd love to open up our facilities, but it's not that easy to open it up without some real clear protocols in place. And the it's it's, our groups have been, our parents and our community and our groups have been patient, but they continue to look around and see other districts opening up and they continue to ask, you know, where are you at in this process? So we are meeting next Monday on the twenty-first. Again, this kind of goes hand in hand with what we're talking about with students. But this week, we are going through all those family requests for students coming back into the dial so that we can work through those with the elementary, middle school, and high school level. And then also looking at relative to our ability, bringing more students in for the educational day, looking at our State High School League sports and and how we're going to be conducting practices, and then looking at outside user groups and are we able to accommodate? How are we able to accommodate? And what are those those times that we're able to do that?
Yeah, perfect. Thank you very much. And there may be some questions after the presentation, but appreciate that, Jeff. The the next, the next adjustment that I'd like to talk a little bit about is the Wednesday flexible instructional days. And I'd like to invite Principal Karen Zalinski up to help me with the elementary piece of this. We started planning the summer for those flex days at the elementary, really looking at how can we support interventions and students who need additional support as well as as we continue to evolve to look at how do we support other students as well? We have had some questions, especially from some parents, asking about, could we just do a rotating A and B? Obviously, parents look at other models that other districts are doing and asking about, you know, could we rotate Group A one week on a Wednesday, Group B on one week? So I did ask elementary principals to collect some input from parents and staff about that. And as you might guess, many parents said, yes, we would like that. We would like to to see a rotating schedule like that. Staff also, you know, said that, yep, they could understand the value of that model as well. However, they also really wanted a chance to implement all of the things that they had been planning and the schedules and the data use that they had been planning for several weeks. So at this point, the recommendation is that we will stay in the current model around supporting students through student interventions. And we're going to continue to monitor this. We'll continue to work with our built teams and our principals and our staff and and parents as we look down the road to see what possible future changes look like. And I've asked Karen just to speak a little bit to what an elementary Wednesday looks like right now with that intervention. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Dr. Stallow. Good evening, all. I will briefly explain to you the flex day model. First of all, I want you to know that the teachers and I are completely jazzed about this. When we designed this idea, it was with the intent that we look at our learners carefully using assessments in literacy and math, in social-emotional learning, and in their academic engagement. We know that all learners are different and some of our kiddos have a harder time engaging from afar with those at-home days than others. So we took all of that information, the first couple of weeks of the school year, and we sent out invitations to our parents and said, your child met one or more of these criteria, and we invited them in. And so we had an opportunity of a lifetime. In my thirty-plus career, I used to say, what if I could get these eight or ten kids with me this many extra hours every week? And our dream came true. So we have a chance to look at this, this first quarter and possibly into second quarter. We've just begun. The teachers have designed these flex days. It's a work of art. They took those four and a half hours, almost five hours, and they have designed their days specifically with the children's needs in mind. They have small groups in math, in reading. They've individually tailored lessons for these kiddos and they've put it all together. It's taken hours and it's masterful. We've had two days of successful flex days. We continue to monitor and adjust, watching students. We want to see what kind of impact this can truly have. And it's exciting. I I'm really excited to see what can potentially happen and the growth rates of the students, that's what we're interested in. These are the students we really want to hone in on. So we're excited about that and we also want to be fluid and flexible because we know that this might be an opportunity for a few of our students to just get that little boost and they might be good to go. And we will invite in other students to also partake in these specialized days.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Karen. At the secondary level, the flex days are really an opportunity for our teachers to spend some time with our Distance Learning Academy students and to have some some structured time for that as well as professional development and collaboration. At this point, they are inviting some students in, but not to the extent that the elementary is. And because of the secondary teachers' expectation of teaching home hybrid, in-person hybrid, and DLA at the same time, Distance Learning Academy students, we really value the Wednesdays and the the opportunity that teachers have to connect with students during that time. At this point, I'd invite Dr. Edwards and Dr. Bezek up. I don't know if there's anything else that you would like to say with the the flex days? And as you're walking up, I will just go on to the next slide quick, John, if you want to forward that for me.
I would love to.
Thank you. And I know last, the last time we presented, we talked a little bit about the difference between elementary and secondary Distance Learning Academy. At the elementary level, it is its own school with over six hundred students, so we've got sections of every grade level and teachers designated as only DLA teachers to those students. At the secondary level, it's different. As I just said, this is not a different online school. We wanted to maintain a full range of all of our class offerings as well as the sixth period day. And I remember Dr. Schendinger talking about the importance of our teachers and our rigor with this. So we built that a little bit differently. And as I said, what the what the model, what the model needs then is for teachers to be working with home hybrid, in-person hybrid, and DLA students at the same time. So I know there's been questions raised about, could the secondary look more like the elementary with designated DLA teachers? Or would there be any way for my fifth-hour English class to be all DLA students? And while we believe that there's definitely some challenges to that, I know that we're going to have some additional looking at that as we go. And I'll let Dr. Bezek and Dr. Edwards share a little bit more and then I know Mr. Querem also was was in on conversations about working with teachers on this.
I know one of the pieces people ask, the secondary schedule is difficult. When you're talking about putting kids in DLA in elementary, and not saying that that is easy because it is difficult as well, but if you have twenty-two kids or twenty-three kids, you can pull out a teacher and have a section. The secondary kids all have six classes, so you can't, you'd have to, you can't just pull them out and they're not all in the same classes. They're in a variety of elective classes. And they want AP courses, they want advanced courses, they want, you know, a variety of elective courses. So it just, it it just does not work that way. So that's, you know, one of the things that we try to tell people and try to explain to people. And one of the flexible pieces about our schedule is that we have had a number of kids have to go on quarantine, not because they've had the, you know, COVID. Luckily, we've been pretty lucky there, but a lot of people have had exposure. So those kids go home and quarantine, but they're able to stay with the same teacher and be able to keep up on the lessons because they can become a DLA kid for, you know, fourteen days while they're on quarantine. So those are the pieces that are actually helpful to, you know, and hopefully we don't see more of that, but I'm, my concern is as we get to the winter months and all of that, we are going to see more of that. And we feel like we're set up pretty well to be able to meet the needs of those kids and our staff as well that are going out. That's, I've heard people ask questions about the Blue Gym and why we have a Blue Gym set up with some extra classrooms. And we've been using that on a daily basis. Like I said, or Joe mentioned, I had six different people tell me over the weekend that, oh, I've got to quarantine because, you know, I have a kid or myself, I've been exposed. So we're able to shift those classes in there and the teachers are actually able to teach from home. They're, you know, they're not sick per se, but they have to be in quarantine. So we're able to meet the needs. You know, is it how I'd love, want it to be if I could wave a magic wand? No, but it is working. And you've seen the stats where I have twenty-nine people with accommodations in my building and I'm able to run every day, even with getting calls in the morning that people are out and people are ill and all of those things. So people are working their tails off. They are doing really good things, but it's required a lot of people to do things that they normally wouldn't do. So, yes, people are stressed. I'm talking to principals around other districts, they're all in the same boat. None of us, you know, nobody's got the run one right answer. Even if you've got a different model, you've got a different issue. So we feel we've got a solid model and we keep listening to people because I get it, there are issues. I get it, I want to try and make it better and we keep trying to tweak that on a, on a daily and a weekly basis, so.
And I would just echo a lot of what's been said and certainly, we prepared this for that dial. I think that's really the key thing is, as we began looking at this back in July and into early August, right after we received that dial information from the governor and those specific numbers, we knew in reality that going between models was going to be a real, at the secondary level, as you look at that threshold that Joe Kubushek was talking about earlier- about earlier tonight, the number for secondary that gets us into hybrid or into distance learning is at that higher number of thresholds. So we were really prepared as we put together our schedules. We spend a lot of time at the secondary level. I would say four to eight weeks, frankly, getting ready for a normal school year. But in this particular case, our schedule gets built, and that, in a normal, typical school year, we aren't accounting for capacity constraints that we have as well to consider. One of those things that we definitely would have to give careful consideration to, and as we're going to talk about later tonight, as we look to bringing students back, potentially who are currently on distance learning and want to come back in hybrid, that's a very serious consideration we have to look at. So definitely, all of those things that Dr. Bezek mentioned, we feel are something that we need to be able to commit to our students, our staff, and create great flexibility in and out because very much like Dr. Bezek said, we have students who are able to stay with their courses, stay with the same courses that they wanted when they registered back in January and February. They're able to continue to have those courses because of the model that we've adopted, and we would be concerned that some of those limitations would exist. We have a plethora of opportunities at different levels for different learners and different elective offerings that we want to continue to maintain. We're going to the next one?
Jim's going to just, I think, add a little bit more, but then, yeah, you've got the next one.
So I think all that flexibility and the ability to change the dial is, is a really good thing, and it was one of the top priorities when we looked at doing that. One of the things it does do, as Terry mentioned, is it puts a lot on staff. It puts, they're doing three things at one time, and that concern continues to come up, and we're talking about it. We, we meet with the bargaining unit on a weekly basis. They have brought it up. We will continue to study it, looking at all ways that we might be able to look at that workload issue to tweak things in order to do that, and we'll continue to do that, including looking at things like that whole DLA thing and schedules. It's a, that's a tough one, but it's one that we continue to need to, to look at each of those options as possibilities, as a way to relieve some of those additional things that, and still get a good model that gives students value-added education, so.
Thank you. Yeah, John and Dan, you want to take the next slide, too, please?
All right. Perfect. Yeah, we're, just a couple of things that we wanted to bring to light tonight. Understand that there have been some questions that have been raised around what it looks like for synchronous opportunities and some of the challenges that we've already spoken about, as Jim just mentioned, having students who are in, on your class roster that are DLA students, hybrid A students, hybrid B students, which means some are in person and some are at home, all of those nuances. So after a couple of weeks of implementation, frankly, it was a week and a half worth of implementation because of our later start, we prepared and worked with our teachers about how can we be more clear, particularly at the middle school level, as you, as you look at what's here and hear us speak tonight. We definitely want to make sure, from a perspective of developmentally appropriate, what it is that we're putting in front of our students and how we're monitoring that. So we prepared a communication that went out, as you can see there, on September 25th to clarify for our parents, because obviously, parents play an amazing role in supporting our students at home. We recognize that and fully appreciate that. So we, we've, we put some time and energy into how can we make that an easier task? And so we post our weekly calendars, and we have those weekly calendars front and center on the Schoology page. And I didn't have room here to put a screenshot. I thought of doing so, but just to give an example. But anyways, on the Schoology page, the weekly calendar includes information about the specific Google Meet opportunities that are available for that particular class, specific with the time, and each teacher has a minimum of 10 minutes of synchronous time, and they get to pick at what point is pertinent for there to be that opportunity during the class period. So it varies. It's not always the first 10 minutes. It's certainly not always the last 10 minutes, but it's very clearly laid out on a weekly plan so that parents can begin, and this came out, this feedback, that first bullet you see about the 3pm on Friday, we got some feedback last year from families during our fourth quarter that if we could have that information prior to Monday morning for our sake of getting together on Sunday night and the family and planning out our week, and so that, that was our goal there, because obviously, we know that the age of our students require a higher level when they're learning at home of support from the adults in the household, so. And teachers use that 10 minutes on a variety of ways. It might be introducing a lesson, it might be checking for understanding from the previous day's lesson, it might be engaging in some direct instruction to, direct instruction to continue the lessons for the week.
Ours is very similar. If you look at, you look at the bullets, I won't read them, but we have the Weekly Planning Guide as well. We talk about laying out expectations for the week and when is there going to be synchronous learning opportunities or lessons. Probably the one piece that we're, where we drifted away, then the middle schools did, and we're actually having conversations about looking at, do we need to tighten some things up? We said multiple opportunities throughout the week to have synchronous lessons. We didn't say every day 10 minutes. We said, you know, on average, it should be about that. But I also know in talking to others, when somebody has a, a set, hey, we're going to do this at the beginning of every hour, that the engagement of that starts to drift, too, because kids go, oh, it's just this, you know, and if something's in there and it's, hey, this is important, you got to be there, and it's scheduled in there. So, but I know I am getting some questions on that, so we just met with our built just this last week about, hey, let's start reflecting on what are we doing and should we have some more set times on that? So we're having those conversations right now. I believe we're going to pick that up on our staff development day as well to see if that is something that is warranted. So we continue to monitor and adjust, so.
Great. Thank you. And that's exactly what we wanted to show tonight, is that this will be an evolution all year. And as we hear questions and as our principals and leaders hear questions, they'll continue to, to monitor and adjust as we go. So thank you very much. I think, Jeff, you are back up here to talk a little bit more about the change request process to end this presentation.
Good evening again. So this is our timeline, and as a board, you have seen that, seen that in previous presentations. We committed to parents that we would ask them prior to quarter two to indicate if, whether they wanted to stay with the dial, look into, move into DLA or vice versa, if they started the year in the dial to come back, or started the year in DLA to come back into the dial, which would be more into the A-B schedule. And so you see our timeline that we have here, just as a reminder, the, the timeline, the window to collect that feedback has closed. It closed on Friday. We started to go through the data, and we started meeting with elementary principals today. Secondary principals are starting to look at those requests as well over the next week here, and then ultimately, it's, it's figuring out where we have space on the A and B day as far as the requests coming in and out. Prelimarily, the number of students in DLA wanting to come back into the dial is 503 students. We have 91 students district-wide that want to go from the dial out to DLA. So the net into the dial is 412 students across the district and distributed relatively evenly between elementary, middle school, and high school, but there are some differences there. We do have some follow-up with some families who, when they filled out the form, it was a bit inconclusive. So we're doing our due diligence to follow up with those families to gauge what their true intentions were. So between the 19th and the 30th, we'll be going through elementary and secondary lists for students, trying to facilitate as many requests as we can so that we can communicate with parents on November 6th in preparation for the start of the second quarter. While we're looking at the, you know, there's several parts of this process. You know, the parents requesting is that first part. We've asked principals to go through and update their building capacity, looking at spaces that might be used, unused, looking at how many students are there in A and B. We realize in some buildings or some grade levels that B days seem to be heavier than A days, particularly in some of our elementary, and that's just given because student enrollment has fluctuated since the start of the year. And that's, you know, probably, in, in this type of year, I think it's understood, but every year, we do have student enrollment fluctuations during the course of, of, of the first months of, first weeks and first month of school leading up to October 1st. Also, to identify additional resource areas in classrooms that could be used for, for classroom space. The other component we need to look at to match it with is bus capacity. Do we have the capacity on the buses in order to facilitate transportation? If they live in our district and, and we do have to provide them transportation, we certainly have asked parents to, if they'd be willing to provide transportation, and that's wonderful, but at the end of the day, if, if parents are not able to do that, we do need to have space for students to provide them transportation to school. And again, looking at the number of days, the ridership on A days and B days. We're also looking at the number of classrooms at each site for kids company. Currently, at our elementaries, all of our elementaries have, and I'm not, have at least four classrooms devoted to that tier-one childcare and some of the district childcare purposes, and I'm not counting the cafeteria or gym space before and after school. And so looking at the shift, how does that impact childcare? Are we able to use some of those childcare spaces for classroom spaces, you know, depending on the site? And so those are things that we certainly have to look at through this process over the next week and a half to two weeks. And so I think to start, you know, our key message is here is, you know, and you've heard this before, we, we definitely spent a lot of time planning, and I think with planning, everything may look good on paper. It may look a bit not specific on paper, and then you have staff that come back, you have students that come back. You start looking at how all the, how your plans come together and how they evolve and how they materialize. And so again, as we've looked at, you know, you heard Mr. Kubusik talk about 10 students and families, or 10 students and staff, I think it was, that, that had a positive exposure rate. There's a lot of testament to the positives as a school district by ensuring all of the guidance from the state, that we're doing our due diligence and following that guidance, training staff and students about mask usage, how they behave, or how they, how they maintain their distance, washing hands, all of those protocols. I mean, it's not one protocol that I think that saves the day, but I think it's using all of those protocols together, and our staff being aware of them, our students being aware of them, in order to minimize and then also navigate, you know, as, as those issues do come up. And so the things we have to think about, too, is, as we have more students coming in, we, we're going to have to look at our protocols as well. So you, from previous board meetings, you've heard, you know, all those seating charts, who's in the classes, where are they, you know, for contact tracing purposes, those will all need to be updated. I think, too, as, as we look at, particularly at the secondary level, we, and we do have, and this is probably more normal than elementary, but at quarter and semester break with our quarter classes, we do have students that do change teachers, but we do have to look at staffing across the district, elementary and secondary, to see what those transitions are look like, look like in order to accommodate more students coming into the building. I think I wrapped up those other two in just kind of a broad statement. But I, I would just say, I would just also say, too, it has been a collective effort from students to staff to parents, child nutrition, I mean, you've heard that tonight, you've heard that all the way through. I mean, that's the one thing you continue to bring forward, Dr. Stallow, in this Ready to Learn Plan, and, and it is. It's about doing what we can to keep kids in the building, keep them learning, and it's, it's been a tremendous effort. I don't think it's going to get any easier, but also, too, I do want to acknowledge that our ability to mitigate any spread or mitigate a lot of those things that maybe some of those other schools or communities are having, we're going to do our best to do what we can to follow that guidance and make sure that we are committed to learning, we can continue to, to learn and continue to try to balance what our community is asking of us, you know, having more days in school and, you know, and try to work towards user groups. I'll try to wrap that back up into this as well, so. With that, I think it's back to you, Dr. Stallow, and the team, for any other questions from board members.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any questions from board members?
Certainly.
There, I don't see anybody waving. Jonathan, did you have something?
Sure. I have several. I'll try to go quick. Jim, you're talking about tracking absences, both students and staff. Do we have a sense, are those significantly higher than in previous years? I assume it's up, but do we, do we, do we pay, do we track whether those are directly attributable to COVID? How are we doing there?
Jim, can you come up to the mic, please? Thanks.
I got the last one. The absences are just absences. And what we're looking at, and we can break that down, and we could look at that, the reasoning for that, but I think our main concern is who isn't available to work, right? So who isn't here? Ultimately, that's, that, that's what makes the difference. Is it different? I think it's up a little bit from it would be in a normal year, and it's going up as we go. I, it'll be curious to see after we get a few more weeks under our belt, what that looks like, what that spread becomes, if there is one. My guess is, if you think about cold and flu and everything you heard here, plus potential exposures, that, that is going to go up. I don't have the numbers for you right now. I can sure do that and do that comparison, but relative to last year, I think we're up a little bit.
But not remarkably.
Right now, I don't, I don't believe it's significant. The last two weeks, I think I would be interested in looking at that to see how that compares to a regular year, and I haven't done that.
Okay. That's, that's a start. Thank you. I think this is probably a Jeff one, or maybe Dr. Bezek and the secondary guys. As we, as we get students coming back, as they change to being on the dial, does that give us, does that give you an opportunity to try to accommodate more? I think you, you mentioned kind of asking to be able to have my fifth hour be all of my DLA students, or those requests coming from staff and that idea, is that something we're, we're trying to work toward? Do we think with students, with additional students coming in the building, it's an opportunity to?
It doesn't make it any easier. For them coming back, it makes it tighter. The biggest thing right now for us is trying to balance our A and B sections for, trying to keep 16 kids in a classroom so that we can guarantee six feet apart. Because if a kid gets sick now and we're, we can say we're guaranteed that they've been six feet apart, the only kid that has to go home is that kid that was sick. If we can't, and that's the problem, like if you bring the elementary kids back and you have everybody and you don't have the spacing, if one kid gets sick, that whole class goes out. And at the high school, that kid is in six classes, so six classes go out. And when you're sitting there trying to balance these sections, for me, it says, oh, you know, you're like, oh, I only have about 59th graders. Well, everybody that's coming back, when we were trying to make this balance, my teachers have, I have 100 teachers, they have five classes apiece, so I have 500 sections to look through. And then I have now A and B sections, so I have 1,000 sections to look through. So when Jeff goes, well, just tell me what, you know, I'm picking on Jeff, just tell me what you got for room. I'm like, well, yeah. Yeah, I will, but let me go through my 1,000 sections of where I could put somebody. When we were trying to balance classes before the start of the year, every kid that we were trying to put in and balance, it was taking about a half an hour to 45 minutes per student to try and get the balances right in those sections. So when people say, hey, can't you just move? Yeah, I wish I could just move, kids like that, but it's, it's so difficult. That, that's, part of that plays into it.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely understand. You know, I, we, we, of course, are hearing not just from, you know, parents, also staff. It is, it's, it's what, what our staff is being asked to do is monumental.
It is, and I, what I want to give them permission to do is think about, I'm going to get in trouble if I say this, but I keep trying to tell them to think about things differently. I've been telling my staff from the beginning, plan like you're teaching in distance with the benefit of having kids there a couple of days a week. But people want to, you know, we've got high-performing kids, high-performing staff, and they want to give kids the best education possible, and they're killing themselves a little bit trying to do what they've always done. And you, you got to look at it a little bit differently. And that's easy for me to say because I'm not in the trenches doing that, but I keep trying to say that to try and give them permission to look at it, doing it differently.
And that's one of
And that's one of the reasons it's, it's going to be so important for professional development and for really that staff-led professional development. I know last Wednesday during some collaboration time, I saw the professional development sessions that Dr. Bezek's school and our staff promoted and shared with one another. And I think staff continuing to figure out what works well and share those best practices with one another is going to help us along the way.
Lastly, I'll, I'll keep my questions to a minimum for others, but just know how much we all appreciate all the effort. I think the fact that we have such low numbers and we've had a total of, you know, 10 positive cases is also a testament to the fact that the processes and the protocols and all of your work is effective and, and is working. And I'd also actually give a shout out to the community overall because I do see, I don't remember the last time I went out and saw somebody not wearing a mask. I mean, and everybody in town contributes to us being able to get the numbers down and, and be able to get students back. And I think, I, I really feel like parents are working at it, everybody's working at it, I think we'll get there.
The kids have been great in the buildings and any parent that's come into an event or just come into the building, we haven't had any issues with saying, hey, you know, even if somebody forgets something, they come running, I forgot a mask, can I get a mask? Yes, you can.
And I want to jump, one of the questions you asked, that Jim responded to around the staff attendance, hybrid students, so those that wanted to come to school. I mean, that is amazing how strong our attendance is for those students. Above, I'm speaking for the middle school, above 95% on a daily basis. So to your point, they're doing the right thing, they're taking care of themselves and they're, and they're still coming to school in high numbers, so.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Mary? Yes, first of all, these slides that were, that were presented tonight, they're going to be part of the, are they part of the board book now because they weren't there over the weekend and last week?
No, it said in, it said in the board packet that they'd be available at meeting time and I think they were posted at about 3 o'clock.
Great, great, because I know the same thing happened last time too.
Right, because when we have our incident command team meeting on Thursday, on Thursday afternoon and then we're continuing to work on this on Friday, that might just be what happens with some of these updates.
Understand.
Thanks for your grace.
So, you know, and Dr. Stallow, you and I talked a little bit about this ahead of time. You know, we, we have been hearing a lot from teachers, staff members, parents, but a lot of staff. And, and we get that what they're doing right now, especially in the secondary, is pretty much teaching three classes at a time. The hybrid B that's home, if they're teaching hybrid A, the DLA and the kids in the, in the, in the classrooms. And we've been doing this for about a month now, and we have about a month before Q2. One of the words that, that Dr. Bezek mentioned was, you know, reflecting and reflection. Are we giving the, the teachers enough time to sit down? Is there any time for them to sit down and actually reflect on what has worked and what hasn't worked and try to make adjustments? And I for one, you know, I don't care how extreme the adjustments are, as long as they work. You know, it just, I'd like to, to, to get the feedback directly from the educators also and, and, and have them do that reflection actually. And I know a lot of them have requested that ability to do it, not just piecemeal, but actually as a whole. The most important thing is that we educate every child, student, regardless of what role that they're in. And as has been stated, I mean, you know, we do have a lot of high performing educators out there. They are not always, they, they, they expect a lot more out of themselves, you know, when they can't do what they were doing before. Now, maybe that reflection will end up in exactly what we're doing right now. But I do think that, you know, we heard this after doing distance learning last year that, that a lot of educators, they looked at things a little differently. They saw their students in a different light. But they also had the opportunity to see the students through most of the year and then they switched to distance. This time they're, they are getting new students and this is a whole new world. So I, I was just wondering if someone could address that and if we're doing that. And just to make, I, I, you know, no matter what changes are made, the point is, is that they feel that, that they are able to do the best under the circumstances. And I think the general consensus is right now that I'm hearing of the ones that are speaking up and talking to board members, whether it be in a grocery store or over email or giving us a call or something like that, that they, for whatever reason, they don't, there's a lot of frustration and it's not just the stress. I think it's, I think it's really because they want to give every student, regardless of the circumstance that they're in, the opportunity to have that in-person experience. So, and maybe that's not possible, but that reflection time, I think is pretty important.
Karen, would you mind speaking to what you shared with me last week? And as Karen comes up, the Google form that you're looking at, and I don't know if you've implemented that with your staff yet. And then if you recall, that, that is, that was my meeting with principals. And certainly principals haven't had a whole lot of time, nor have teachers, to reflect. But I, I agree, I think that's, that's exactly what we're hoping. And as we can reflect on our best practices and like I said, the, the professional development that Dr. Bezek's staff, student, or, or staff-led professional development was, was really important. But Karen just shared with me, I know, and I know there's other principals that are doing that, but I think that's kind of the, the idea of how do we give teachers a chance to, to share where they're at. Right, because they don't have a lot of time here, spot on. And like one of my teachers said to me the other day, I am teaching like my hair is on fire. And she is moving and shaking, and they all are. And it's on us to create those windows of opportunity where they can reflect and stop. Fortunately, we use the DuFors PLC model. And so they do meet once or twice a week and just as a team reflect on how it's going. More importantly, we all need to check in with teachers and say, how are you? No, how are you really? As a wise superintendent said to us recently, to really find out, how are you? And so one of the methods we're using is a, I have two staff meetings per month, for example, and I'm using a Google form as a check-in method. And I know other principals are doing this too, it's, this is just, not just me. And it's asking them, how are you on a continuum of one through five? I'm drowning? Hey, I'm doing great, talk to me about it. Tell me your challenges, tell me your successes, tell me what you need from me. Tell me how I can better support you, how we can better support each other and how we can help each other make it through this really, really difficult time. So, yeah, point well taken. And we really want to keep building in that time for them to reflect and talk and really tell us how they're doing.
I want to clarify something though, and I get that, and I appreciate the support. You know, that what they're going through is, is pretty tough, what the students are going through, what the families are going through is, is, you know, it's, it's tough. That's an understatement, I think. But when we're getting that feedback or when the, the administration is getting that feedback, are they able to correlate that feedback in order to make significant changes all at once? Instead of, okay, here's how you can handle your class better or this section better. Is there anything that we should be doing as a district to sit down and say, maybe we need to make a monumental shift in this area? Yes, it will be disruptive, but will it be the best for the rest of the year? That sort of thing. And I'm not sure if there's even enough time for the principals and the administration to actually get that feedback and correlate it in that way. And, and, you know, maybe that will be, like I said, disruptive. But if it ends up the best overall in the long run, then we should stomach that disruption.
Yep, we're not afraid of doing that. That's what we believe is continuous improvement and we'll continue to, to seek input. And as, that's what we're all here for, is what's best for kids. And no one around me or any of our staff are afraid to work hard and we're sure not going to stay in a status quo mode if, if, if we believe there's something better.
Other questions? I have another question though, I have two other questions, if I may. You know, one of the things that we kind of addressed with the Wednesday flex time were the, were the students that needed the extra support. Is there any specific plan right now to, for all the kids that have IEP and 504 plans, et cetera? I know that that has been a stressful point in these, in these areas, especially since a lot of them are on distance learning. Can someone address how we've continued to grow or handle that, those specific needs?
Yes, so our students who are in specific programs in each of our schools are in session with us all day, four days a week. So that's one avenue by which we're addressing that. The other is this, the criteria for the flex days does include options for any students on 504s or IEPs. For example, depending on the number of minutes they need, additional supports with engagement. So we have that opportunity to also invite students in who may be with, using a 504 or special education. So, yes.
Okay, and then my last question is, we got an update in the last study session, I believe, about our materials, our cleaning materials. We had a ton of masks, I believe, in inventory. Is that still the case? Are we, are we doing well?
Yes, I can address that. So we are keeping an inventory and we're forecasting when to order more.
Do the buses have extra PPE on them?
They have the extra masks and cleaner.
Great, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I have a comment, I don't know if there are questions. Okay, I just wanted to take a few minutes, first of all, to thank everybody for the time you put into presenting tonight. I couldn't help but think as all the different pieces were going of the child story about the elephant. And there's either blindfolded or blind mice who are going in and one is feeling the trunk of the elephant, one is feeling the leg of the elephant, and one is feeling the tail. And everybody thinks from their experience that this is what's happening and I know what I need to do to make this a little bit better. And one of the things I'm learning more and more every day as we go through this is even as a parent of someone in the district right now, even as a board member, different roles, the information I'm exposed to, there's no way to fully grasp the complexities that everyone is going through. So as a parent, I might say, I have these concerns. I'm one of those board members who comes in between meetings and doesn't understand at all and still fires off questions. And thank you for, Dr. Stallow either presents the information or sends me to the person who can. And I'm just learning by listening to all of you, I have such a greater sense tonight of how complex this all is. Two of you administrators said tonight that both the state and county data tell us what we can do and it's our internal measures that tell us if we can do it. And I think that bears repeating for anybody listening, that that's really critical. There's those state or the county numbers and the state guidance. But if we aren't looking at every piece you presented tonight, then we don't, that's how we figure out if we can do what the state has outlined for us. I also want to acknowledge several of you have said how exhausted the staff is. And I just want to take a moment, and I'm sure my fellow board members feel the same, to really thank everybody. We started out with a construction update and I've been in every building in the school and it's amazing and everybody's exhausted from that alone. And then the janitors and the staff who got the buildings ready last minute. The custodians who continue to keep things clean and safe for us. Our teachers who are doing above and beyond what we could have never imagined would have been asked of them. Our paras, our food service staff, I've been in those kitchens that first week of school and we learned what was working and what wasn't and they're figuring it all out. All the way through our administrative team who has not gotten to catch their breath since the middle of March. Everybody is struggling to stay above water. But what I noticed tonight was that everyone came together on the team and told us what their pieces were, how they impacted the plan and set it in a positive, steady way. I mean, Karen, when you got up here and just about bounced with joy at the opportunities that are being created that we've never had before for our elementary students, what a change in perspective for me, sitting here, who only sees a part of the elephant, right? A part of the picture. To hear the secondary administrative team get up. You know, we talked to a lot of teachers, I have a secondary student, I see it from one point of view or the teachers speak to us. And then you explained to me a little bit better about how those numbers work. I mean, there are moments you don't even know what words I think to put out next just because of how complex it is. So I just, I want to thank everybody in our district for coming together and doing this for our students, getting our kids in the buildings to the best of our abilities. We're working towards getting them back even more full. But the, the lengths to which everybody is going and the collaboration that is needed from every position in the district, including the board and the parents and the students. I think if we can just remind ourselves that this is, these are exceptional days. And we're going to come in and we're going to ask our hard questions and, and those of you who are in the trenches are going to say, okay, let me try and explain this to you again. And I appreciate that patience. The more we can work together on this and move forward, including our community, the better for our students. So that was a rambling way of just saying, we don't know everything you're going through, but we're thinking about you, we're with you, we're proud of you and we are grateful. And I want to thank you for how you brought us along tonight in such an ordered way so that I can sit back and say, I get it a little bit better.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Yeah, this is Melissa, actually.
Stacy? I'm sorry, Melissa, Stacy waved her hand. Stacy?
I just have a couple. As far as...
What? I'm sorry. Right, okay.
So as far as the facility usage for the outside groups, I'm just wondering, you know, for those outside groups, I know we have told them after first quarter, but is there a timeframe as to when we think we'll make that decision? Just from the standpoint, you know, their, their need.
I know that the, the, as Jeff, I'll start and if you've got something to add, Jim, please do. I know as Jeff stated, our next meeting is October 21st. And at that point, I think we'll continue to review. I know there's another group that's been working between an earlier meeting and that meeting to kind of see where we're at and what we can do. Because we, Stacy, we'll want to, you know, we understand the scheduling demands and, and, you know, everything that, that our partners have to think about too. So we'll certainly do that as quickly as we can. I, I don't have a specific date, but please know and, and I want our partners to know that we're working on it and we're looking at everything we possibly can to, to see if we can change the first quarter decision or not.
Okay, and then my other question is regarding, you know, I know on the secondary level where we're at, you know, we've had some assessments, some tests, some first rounds with those kind of things. And I think, I don't know if you've spoken to it directly, but I'm just wondering on those kids that, you know, are really struggling, I think there's a fear just with this model change and how things are going that, you know, the failure rates or kids struggling, that number is going to increase or is increasing. And so what are we doing as far as intervention or are teachers getting supports for those kids? You know, because if I have 150 kids and normally I have a 5% or something, I mean, I'm making these numbers up, but, you know, 5% failure rate or kids that are really struggling and all of a sudden it's at 15, you know, how, how, you know, I, as a professional, obviously I want to do as much as I can, but I think those numbers start to get daunting. And so is there, is there help and support?
Yes, we're looking, we're, we're tracking, you know, what is our normal rate? And it's a little bit higher, but it's not out of the, you know, it's, it's not... I want to say it was like about six and it's like about nine. We're looking and seeing where it's at. We put some things in place, like for the ninth graders, we've put the bar model in place. It's not the best year in the world to, you know, implement something new. And, you know, that's another thing that puts, you know, is taxing on people. But that's where we guaranteed that all the ninth grade students would have the same core teachers and those core teachers meet once a week to talk about the kids that they have in common. And then we refer them on to make sure that we're keeping up on them. So we're building that in place in the ninth grade. And again, that is another meeting for ninth grade teachers. But hopefully it'll eliminate some work down the, down the road. But we are doing that. We're also watching our, our upper class numbers. We've got the counselors and the APs looking at the failure lists and seeing, you know, what do we need to do to intervene and have conversations and those things. So we are cognizant of that and trying to make sure that, that doesn't get out of hand. Because it's real easy for somebody to, you know, it's easy for kids to slip through the cracks. Because it's real easy for somebody to, you know, it's easy for kids to slip through the cracks when they're there all the time. It's even easier when they're, you know, when they're at home, so.
Similarly, similarly at the middle school level, we have, we bring our teachers together in grade level meetings on a monthly basis. And we already did that at the end of September. And our counselors and interim between those meetings are looking at data regarding failures, missing assignments, that sort of thing, and strategizing who those students are that are struggling in this current model. And we definitely have identified students that we certainly, and frankly, we looked at some of the rates of not completing courses last spring with students who were sixth and seventh graders and fifth graders who struggled in distance learning. So we have information on those students and identifying ways and strategies. And that's one of the things we definitely, in addition, for our teachers focusing on DLA students on flex days, our counselors using that time on flex days to focus and support students who fall into that category.
And I will also say it behooves us to be monitoring what we're doing. If we're seeing that kids are struggling that much and staff are struggling that much, maybe we need to modify what it is that we're asking of our students and our staff to do. So that is the, that's a reflective piece that needs to happen as well. And that's why we have those weekly meetings, those PLC, those learning team meetings, where you have those discussions and say, hey, what is it I want kids to know? But, you know, it's that guaranteed and viable curriculum. Yes, it's guaranteed, but it's got to be viable. If you can't get through it yourself or the kids can't get through it, then we got to dial it back. Because who are we handing these kids off to? Most of the classes, we're handing them off to ourselves. So we know where we're at, we can pick up, and we can fill in the pieces that are, that are missing. So again, just it's giving ourselves permission to look at things a little bit differently. We got to look at the world that we're in and the situation that we're in, and we got to monitor a little bit and adjust, you know.
Can I, can I?
Thank you. I thought, just feedback, I thought the presentation was excellent.
Can I ask a real quick question because it has to do with Stacy said? I'd like to hear from the other board members first. Okay. So Melissa? Say we're up here. Melissa?
Thanks, Lee. So our district command center showed this evening that we have not been on the listing for the Minnesota Department of Health COVID impact list. That was back on slide 17. We discussed that. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And how many students are reporting COVID in K-5 since the beginning of the school year?
Joe's coming up.
Yes, I had shared, we had, we have 10 cases, staff and student combined, since we've started.
And what for K-5?
I want to say of the 10, the K-5 makes up four or five of those 10.
Okay. That's both staff and students?
Correct.
Could we, just a quick question. We've seen some emails come into the board and conversations about full program. And what, what I understand about full programming offerings, for instance, band. We had a lot of emails in the last few days about, hey, I signed my student up for band, and now I'm learning that they can only have band for a part of the year. Can we talk to that a little bit, what that means? I mean, obviously, band doesn't work for a part of the year. They have to pick up the instrument and they need it for the whole year to be able to, to excel. Have we had more information on that?
Dan's coming up.
Yep. So what I think is, is an important point about that, and certainly I, I was a recipient of some recent emails as well with regard to that, as recent as today, and am working on a response. But one of the things that's important to note is that there has not been a loss of instructional opportunity. It has been reshaped to fit our model. Specifically, every other day, year-long class is the equivalent of a semester class. And we continue to have a semester offering in each of those courses. Where, and also an every other day class that was previously a semester is the equivalent of a quarter of instructional time, and we did not lose any of that either.
Okay, thank you, Dan. I appreciate that. Another question here, if we're going to reflect on the Wednesday flex. So Wednesday flex right now, the student that is struggling to raise them up, they've got the ability to use that Wednesday flex date. But what about the average and the accelerated learner? If we think a little bit about the fairness of that, that those learners are able to take advantage of Wednesday. I mean, if you think about it, hearing from parents and say, hey, my student is average or accelerated. And how equitable is that, that they can't have access to Wednesday learning in the, in the hybrid model? Can we speak to that?
I believe we did speak to that. I believe that we spoke in depth about that that was the, the model that we planned all summer. And when we talked to parents and staff, the administrative recommendation was to, at this point, stay the course and monitor our data. And then we'd continue to take a look at that and make changes along the way as warranted.
I just maybe didn't understand a question. So if I'm a parent of an average or accelerated learner, they're not getting the education on Wednesdays. Whereas if I have a student that's special needs or a 504 or an IP, my kid gets to go to school there. So it sounds like a bit like a race to the middle, like we're trying to bring these kids up, they get the education time, but these other folks that are also have, have, have students in the district, they're not able to get their kid in for that learning.
I know on, on Wednesdays, that secondary learning is, it's still a digital learning day. So it's not a day off for those kids that are average or above average. They're actually, the teacher should be planning in a way that there's a lot, that there is, you know, if you're doing a project, there's time built in for them to be working on that project, a lesson that they could be working on. So it's not a day off.
But they want their student, they want their student in there on Wednesday. Is that an option?
Karen, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I can see that the option is not part of the equation. The idea behind flex is that we are really devoting ourselves to specific needs. Every student has needs. So this is a evolving model, right? We've only done two days of flex days. I already have teachers in my building that are designing at-home learning for their accelerated learners. So on Wednesdays, those students still are getting, they are getting pieces, all of those pieces that they ordinarily would go, have for learning outcomes. And so it's evolving. I have a teacher that's starting some small groups, that she does via Google Meet, in fact, in the afternoons, for her, some of her talented learners. So as far as giving options, we would love to do it for every child. Right now, we see it as our greatest need to really accelerate the students and look at those who are most in need. And then we will continue to assess and find those students.
And I just need to say, if, if everybody's acknowledging that time is our biggest need and where it's not enough time in the day, I'm going to spend what little time I have with the kids that are falling behind or struggling before. I'm just sorry I am, and I guess I'm not going to apologize for that.
Well, I guess our greatest need is really to, to come together, to encourage our board to get at least the K-5 kids' school back in school five days a week. We, we don't have the cases. Scott County and Minnesota Department of Health are guidance. And to correct something said earlier, they are not the end-all, be-all. We do have local control. And our number one job is to educate these kids, and we need to do that. And that happens when students are in seats, in the classroom, live learning. So I am going to make a motion, and I encourage my fellow board members to support this, to direct Superintendent Stelo to work through the necessary meetings with the Department of Health for full-time K-5 live learning to begin on October 26, 2020.
That's your motion?
That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
A point of order, too.
Yeah, it is. Right now, we're having a discussion on, and questions on the Ready to Learn Plan, so it is a point of order. Did you have any other questions?
I have no more questions at this point.
Enrique, did you have any questions?
Hello, thank you, Lee. I don't have any questions that haven't already been asked.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mary, you had another question?
Yeah, first of all, I appreciate Stacy's question on, on the social, emotional, and the learning needs and everything. And I do appreciate Dr. Bezek speaking up and saying that, you know, he is personally getting involved with the students. But I do want to know, do we have any resources to add to our already limited number of counselors, particularly now? Is there any plan for that at the middle, especially at the middle and the high school level?
No.
No? Okay. Is there, is there any option to do that? Is there any?
We wouldn't have the funding for that, Mary. I, I look at the but...
That's an answer. Thank you.
Yeah, and again, I, well, counselors play a significant role in social, emotional learning. We've also invested heavily in responsive classroom, in CLR, in second step, in BAR at the high school. So a number of ways that our classroom teachers and support staff support the social and emotional needs of students every single day as part of our core curriculum.
Hey, just a couple comments. I appreciate the, the explanation of what happens and how this is such a complex situation if one person is exposed or thinks they're exposed, and how it snowballs to the rest of the people they're in contact with or possibly could be in contact with. So I appreciate you're going into more detail with that. And with each meeting, we're hearing more detail of things that are happening in the schools, challenges that you're working on as administrators. And I appreciate all the work that the teachers are doing and all the staff. This isn't easy. Nobody likes it. We all just want it to go away. If I could wave a wand, I'd be the first one to do it. We pretty much hate it. But we have to always keep it in perspective that we're working together and we will get through it. And we're not enemies of each other. We just need to, you know, get on the same page and, and work through it, and we'll, we will. But again, thank you for all the work that's being done, and I do appreciate the presentation tonight. So moving on to the enrollment update.
Julie?
Excuse me, Lee, I have a motion.
That was a point of order, Melissa. We're moving on to the enrollment update.
Good evening, Chair Schimmick, Dr. Stallow, board members. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about our enrollment as of October 1. As many of you know, October 1 is an important date for the school district because that is when we report to the Department of Education our enrollment, and we start receiving funding based on that number. If you recall, back in June, the board approved a budget that was based on 125 additional students. Now, let me just talk about, we always follow our framework of our mission, vision, our strategic direction as we work through everything through the business office. Here is our preliminary budgeted enrollment, which was based, what we based our, in budget upon. You can see that the total was 8,925 K students in K through 12. That HK is handicapped kindergarten, and we do count them separately because they're, they are based on seat hours and not on dailies in the, in the district. And then we also had about 172 students attending ECSE, which all of their hours together was about 68 FTE, is what we were budgeting based upon. And then as of October 1 of 2020, our enrollment, you can see that we're at 8763, significantly down, but not alone in this throughout the state of Minnesota, especially in the metro area. We're definitely not one of the only ones that have, are seeing a declining enrollment at this point. I was going to take some time and try and go back and see when the last time the district had declining enrollment. I think it's been 20-plus years, I would say. And we certainly, because of the pandemic, would not have expected this. And so definitely is unprecedented that we are in this position. I think at July 30th, we actually, because of our, but we had budgeted 125, we had 80 students above that number. So we were, had 205 additional students enrolled as of July 30th. And at this point, we're at 162 students less than we had budgeted for this current school year. And also, our early childhood specialized, simply because they can't get into the building, we expect fewer hours in that area as well. Our enrollment history, I just wanted to give you a five-year quick little look at what our enrollment history has been over the past five years. And you can see that we've been a growing district over that time period. And this year, again, just due to the pandemic, we are seeing that declining enrollment. I just want to talk a little bit about the enrollment. We've had some surveys, kind of with other metro districts, and they are definitely seeing the same percentage-wise of enrollment, declining enrollment as we are. Eastern Carver County is at 3.5%, Edina is at almost 2%, Elk River is at 3%. You know, so we're, we're definitely seeing some similar levels as they are. So unfortunately, it's not, well, not the news we would like to hear. We're not alone in this, and we're certainly hoping that we can get a little bit of help from the legislature. I'm not sure what will happen with that. And there is a declining enrollment formula in our current legislation that says that we get 28% of the difference between the two years. And so we'll see if, if we can, you know, we'll definitely utilize that. We're hoping to maybe at least be held harmless against last year, but we'll see what the legislature does at that point. Our enrollment chart, again, you can see over the past, at least since 2006, '07, we've been growing, growing. And then the pandemic certainly had an impact. Any questions about anything that I've presented tonight? At this point, you know, October 1 kind of is our start of refining our budget. We'll be looking at the impact of this on the district's budget. And, you know, what will we anticipate that change will be? We know that typically we lose students this year, especially at the secondary level throughout the school year. We typically see some of that starting right away in September, and we haven't seen that this year. So I'm not really sure. I have no crystal ball any longer. I used to use trend data and some of that and try to determine, you know, where are, you know, where, where enrollment is happening. Unfortunately, during this time, there isn't any trend data on pandemic enrollment. And so I'm certainly am open to suggestions or comments if we, and where do we want to go from here? We'll be working on budget data in the next couple months. And we're trying to do a very comprehensive look at our budget district-wide. By building budgets, department budgets, staffing, we're going to take a deep dive into the budget and just to see where our spending is and what we think we can do. And we'll kind of go from there.
Don't have any questions? Mary?
Julie, in previous normal years, we've always commented on the, the impact of the cross subsidy and pulling out of the general fund in order to subsidize special ed and those programs. Is there, I know this is a strange year, how much is that affecting us this year? Or has that actually been not as significant of a cross subsidy issue?
I just had a conversation with Dr. Stallow earlier tonight about special ed in particular and, and some other programs as well. And just to have a little bit of that conversation with the board. Right now, or last spring, when COVID hit, we were held harmless in all of our revenue. So with special ed, we were held harmless. With other areas, we were held harmless. And we continued to get the same revenue that we had throughout the year, and we just continued that. That has changed for this year. It is not the same. So, for example, special ed transportation. We only are transporting those students two days a week. Our transportation company has inventory for five days a week. They have drivers. They have to have drivers for five days a week. We only get funding for the time that we're actually transporting. So we definitely have a conflict there where we're not getting the revenue that we need as a district in order to pay what we have paid in the past in order to transport our students. Compensatory revenue. Because we're feeding our students for free right now under that summer school programming, we aren't getting the applications that we need for free and reduced lunch. And so that impacts several areas, our title programs, it impacts our compensatory programs. And so I'm predicting a 30% reduction in those programs unless they give us some sort of hold harmless there as well. So there's a lot of areas that as we start to dig into the revenue that we're not receiving, just in the number of students that we have, a lot of the things that are happening to, to help the district are also have impacts down the road that we don't have answers to right now as to how that they're going to help or not help the district. And special ed is one area. Is, I anticipate that that cross-subsidy, if they're not going to hold us harmless, will increase dramatically because those expenses will still be with the district without getting any revenue for those.
One of the things that was brought up in the MSBA legislative request was to hold harmless to numbers of last year. I don't know if that's going to be financially possible for the state. I'm not sure what your thoughts on that are.
Oh, I have a lot of thoughts. You know, if I think of the statewide level, a lot of our students aren't attending public school. So that money isn't being spent at all. So those students that leave us to attend a non-public, or a private school somewhere that's not receiving any funding from the state, that money isn't going anywhere. The state's keeping that funding or isn't having to spend that. So is that some funding that they can maybe help us to hold harmless? Because they're not having to spend it twice. If you think about, they're not having to send it anywhere for the private school. You know, can they keep and hold us harmless at the, at the public schools?
So we don't, we don't have a, a waiver or anything like that for that? So the property taxes of the people that send their kids to private school go into the general fund at the government level, at the state level, and then get allocated out? So are you saying that if they, if they're, they could use that money to allocate it back into the same districts that lost the students?
That'd be one thought that they could-
Directly allocated.
Directly allocated. You know, that's an option. As we know, the state isn't generating the same kind of tax revenue that they've been able to in the past. Simply, you know, restaurants have been shut down, and they're not receiving. And, you know, there's a lot of businesses that are not in, in their business anymore, or there's a lot sold. They've lost a lot of revenue. And so I think they said $4.6 billion at this point that they're anticipating. And so that's a lot of money that they don't have either to give us to school districts. So I don't know what the legislature will do. I'm sure that schools will have a strong voice this year. Because we're not the only district. It's every district, the majority of districts in the, at least in the metro area. And I'm not sure so much about the outstate, but certain in the metro area because we're only not able to, most districts are not able to be in-person.
Any other questions?
This is Melissa. I have a question. If we can just talk about our district. Couple of years ago, I remember asking, do we do absentee interviews when a student leaves? Are we doing that yet? Do we, do we know why they're leaving our district?
Usually, we know where they go. We don't have the staffing to interview all of our parents to say, where are they going? A lot of times, the principal may know. We know, may know if they're going to a public school, or a private school, or another public school. But we don't, we know where they're going. We may not necessarily know why they're going.
I think that's the biggest question. I mean, our, our funding is always going to be limited with the state and with our local property taxes, but we need to retain the students. We need to understand why they're leaving. And I think that would be a simple Google form or something. If they're leaving because they want live-in-person schools, I think we should know about that. That's my only comment.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Me.
Stacy. Stacy?
Sorry. Julie, as far as the dollars we receive, you know, per Corona and some of the Corona relief, you know, I'm just thinking down the line here, is, you know, per, per student, he pays so much dollars, and there's this loss. Do you feel like there'll be some offset with some of the, you know, with some of these dollars that we're able to use? Or is it really not going to have that much of a effect?
Thank you for bringing that up. I was going to talk about that, and I slipped my mind, so I appreciate the question. As you recall, when we talked about earlier about the money that we receive for the coronavirus or the Corona relief funds, those were funds that could only be used on things that were not in our current budget. So we could not use those for anything that we had for teachers that were already on staff or anything like that. We had to use it for things that were unexpected, or that we needed, or that would help. You know, there was that operations PPE for our kids' company, childcare, those kind, and technology. Those are the big pieces that we could use those for. So we can't supplant, we can supplement, we can't supplant. So thank you for bringing that up because people would think, well, you're $2 million short because you lost two, you know, may possibly could lose 200-plus kids. Can't that just make up for it? And no, it can't. Legally, we have to use that for anything over and above, of which you know that we've used that for technology. We've used it for HVAC. We've used it for PPE and for Distance Learning Academy and having some online ways and cameras and those kinds of things for our classroom, for our kids. And, and so definitely software that we needed for online learning. So we, that's where that money has gone. And that's, and for our childcare, it's going there as well. And somewhat for our food service department, for making sure that we are, have the safety protocols in place there as well. So we can't supplant that. I wish we, you know, even if I wished we could, we still had the needs for all of those other things that we utilized the Corona relief funds for. So we, those funds, if you recall, only are good, or I should say good, but we have to spend them by December 30th. So by December 30th, we have, have to have them spent. They have to be listed in our UFARs. They have to be in SERVES, which is a program up at the state. And so those three things have to match. We need time to do that. So in order for that, we need that money actually spent by like December 15th. So we have time to get it in there, enter it all, and make sure that everything matches. If you recall in the timeline for that, by November 13th, the state's going to ask us, they're going to call, or they're going to contact us and say, you haven't spent X amount of your funds. Are you going to be able to spend them all? And then we have to respond, and then we have to make sure they're spent. So, and I believe that we will be able to spend every dime of that and still have some that we could be spending. So that's, that's where that is at. But I just want people, and especially people in the community who are listening, we can't use that money to help offset the loss of our students in our regular fund balance.
There's no other questions? Thanks for the update, Julie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Move on to setting the school board canvassing date. Are you going to address this?
Sure. I'm happy to. We, every year, we set a date that we need to canvas for the school board election. And you can see in the agenda that there's some, some different parameters this year. So really, after the final batch of ballots are run on November 10th, so the absentee results won't be available until after the 10th. And then Scott County needs to print the updated results. So we are recommending that we set a time on November 13th to canvas those votes.
And we'll need four board members minimum to do that. I'm going to propose an early morning meeting. I don't know how early y'all want to go, 7:30, 8 o'clock? 8 o'clock?
8 o'clock's fine.
On the 13th? Can I get four there?
I think so. I have a-
Yes.
I have a quick question. Now, you know, one of the things about the canvassing and the dates and all that is wholly dependent upon, I believe the, even though the state of Minnesota has promised they can count the rest of the absentee votes, do we have any backup date in case they do have an issue and can't get the final numbers out? I mean, there is a lot of concern. I'm not too worried about the Election Commission at the state, but I am involved in some of the security of that, so I'm not feeling myself comfortable we won't need a backup date.
Well, right now, as it's stated, we're required to canvas by November 13th. If they can't, if they don't come through on their end, I would believe they'd have to make some changes for us. So we could look at a different date then, or as it gets close for that time.
I'm just wondering if we have a contingency plan because it's, the counting is-
Well, I'm hesitant to set a date of the next day, or the next day, or the next day.
No, I, I get that. I just don't know.
And I don't know how long they'd let us go. So I guess I would go with the 13th, and we'll have to watch to see if we get information, Martha, from the state as to if there's going to be some kind of a change, if they want more time, things like that. So I would be comfortable with setting the date of the 13th right now. And if something changes at their level, I would expect they'd allow us a longer period of time.
They will. I just didn't know, given people's schedules, if we wanted to set another contingency date. That's all.
It sounds like I could get at least four people here on November 13th at 8:00 a.m., so we'll go with that for now. Okay, moving on to policy. The two policies both involve curriculum and the school district's system accountability. This is the second time this has come to us. I believe that they included it in the board packet with any changes that were made. And we'll start with the curriculum one first, curriculum development. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that?
I have one.
Michael?
In 603, we, it had been taken out that, let's see, 603 on, number three, under letter C. Let's see if I can get there. I can just explain it to you. Under objective, we had, it had been brought to us with, the committee has advisory responsibilities to the school board in regard to district-wide curriculum and technology standards. And we had, and that had been pulled out when it was brought to us. And then the comparable policy, 616, that wording, that similar wording was left in there towards the end of the policy, under objective, under 616. The committee has the advisory responsibilities to the school board in regard to district-wide curriculum and technology standards. I'm just wondering if for consistency, they should, they both be redacted or left in?
Jeff's got it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions on 606? 603, I'm sorry.
Yes, I do have a question. Under general statement of policy, three guidelines on the second page. Elementary and secondary programs will be evaluated through the continuous improvement process, programs to be included, and history is not, is missing.
Is that social studies?
Yeah, it is social studies.
It's history.
Yeah.
That is correct. That is where history is, under social studies.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one because I remember the, the presentation from the study session with Kevin. And I thought there was a couple of things that were still under consideration. I know, I know that we talked about the percentages, but I thought the language is going to be a little bit more in line between the subcommittee meetings and the committee meetings, simply because we kind of talked about the percentage of administration. And right now, with the principals, assistant superintendent, Kevin and his staff showing up, and even one or two board meetings, board members, that what we were going to do is balance that percentage of representation. I'm not sure if it's statutory or not, with parents and, and other community members in there with the subcommittee meetings. And that was going to somehow be-
So curriculum advisory is the committee. The, what Kevin was referencing the last, at the last meeting was trying to bridge the, the desire to kind of have conversations when teachers are having meetings and curriculum meetings, and inviting curriculum advisory members there to participate in those conversations, to get the perspective of, you know, what's being looked at with standards, objectives, assessments. That's not subcommittee. Those are the ongoing curriculum committees. And so in order to bridge that gap, what he was looking to do was to, with his schedule, was invite curriculum advisory members into those meetings, either virtually or, or in person at points of time to ask some questions, get more updates from the committees themselves before it comes to the formal curriculum advisory committee with any recommendations or, or things moving forward to the board.
Is that how we're going to balance out the required percentages?
So when you're talking about made up, the, the curriculum advisory committee is made up. No, that is, earlier tonight, you took action on the curriculum advisory roster and the consent agenda.
Right.
And so there are more parents on there. We're, we always continue to, to find and look for more parents to serve in that capacity.
I understand that, but from what I understand and what I'm trying to, I have it in my notes here. One of the things we had a lot of concern about was the required percentage balance between that. And we tend to be very heavy administratively in the curriculum meetings, even with the added parents. So I was kind of wondering, you know, what we talked about in the study session was trying to mitigate that with the sub-meetings that you just referred to. I call them subcommittee, but-
Right.
Sub-meetings, so that, so that that would be included in the overall makeup of it. Because I don't think even, even, we're, even with the way it looks right now, we still are heavily favoring administration in those meetings. And I'm not sure if that meets our requirement, that we talked about it, or data retreat and a few other things.
My understanding is that the statute says that there has to be more parents. I don't know off the top of my head what that percentage is than, than staff or administrators. And, and that is, that is directly in relation to the, the curriculum committee, not a subcommittee, not an ongoing curriculum, or anything like that. And that's what I thought this policy was in reference to, where it says membership. So I think I agree with what Mary's saying in that where we say parent and, and/or community representatives, that that should be more specific to two-thirds or whatever that number is. I think that's where we're trying to go.
Right.
On this committee, not subcommittees or, or longstanding whatever committee. Jonathan?
In the previous, the prior paragraph, it actually does reference to two-thirds. So under C, the first paragraph, it talks about statute representation, and it does, the last sentence says, "Whenever possible, parents and other community residents shall comprise at least two-thirds of advisory committee members."
Yeah, I had a percentage down, but you're right, there is two-thirds in there.
It is in the policy as two-thirds. Thanks, Jonathan.
So it is in the policy.
And, you know, normally when we show up to the committee meetings, even with the representation of the groups making the presentation, I mean, that, we do not meet that criteria. I mean, that, we do not meet that criteria. And that's why I was asking Kevin, not only for the virtual meetings last time, but also if, if there was parents and other members of the other groups that were able to come in and present, does that shift the balance so that we're in line? Does that make sense?
So, that's what we've done in the past. We've had those other curriculum committees come into curriculum advisory. But that, they're not, they don't necessarily constitute the membership of the curriculum advisory committee. So I think in looking at what, what Jonathan has pointed out, to the extent appropriate and practical is what we're, what we're striving for. You know, we certainly can cut back on administrators on the committee or have them come when there's, when there's topics that are germane. But ultimately, the forum of that committee meeting is to engage the community members and parents that are there. A lot of times, as you know, questions do come up around, you know, just specifics. And our administrators are there to give the perspective around what, how that, what happens at the middle school, or what's happening at the high school, or when it comes to scheduling. And so it, it's kind of how the recommendations play out when they're implemented is where I really find the benefit of having site administrators there at those meetings, talking about just a little bit of a global, more of a broader perspective of how that all works.
I'm on board with that. That's not the issue. The issue is, is how do we manage the two-thirds? And quite frankly, I did ask around about this, and I don't think anybody is, has done it. I mean, I think it's gonna be easier during the pandemic, cuz we can have people on virtually, as was stated multiple times. But I don't know of any school district that has their curriculum committee be two-thirds community members and not staff or administration. So that would be huge.
That's why it says to the extent appropriate and practical.
So are we gonna bank on the extent appropriate for that?
I think we have to.
Yeah.
But I, I guess I would like to encourage the administrators to try and get as many community members as possible to come. And we can't make them come, but, you know, to let them know that, you know, we're looking for people. And I know we approved it tonight, but it's based on the old, on the current policy, since this one hasn't been approved, but...
There are more parents, there are more parents serving this year than there have been in the past. So that has been as a result of recruiting efforts.
Right. And I saw in the minutes that there were more parents at the last curriculum meeting, too. So, Jonathan?
I was just gonna say, I think for the purpose of our discussion tonight, the policy, the policy is what we need it to be. We now just, over time, need to work on the execution of getting those additional votes.
Right. Okay. Can we move on to 616? School district system accountability with the correction that Michael found. Does anyone have any comments or question on, on this? Questions? If not, this, both of these will come back at the work session in October, and we will vote in November.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no second readings. The following two policies are for board approval. This is policy 203, the School Board Operating Norms, and 209 Code of Ethics. Does anyone have any comments on 203? This is the fourth time it's come before the board.
You made the changes last time per our discussion in the study session, and they're still the same, right?
Yep. Nothing's changed since the last time it came, or since we made the changes the last time, I should say.
Can I make a motion to approve it?
Stacy's made a motion to approve it. Do you have a second?
Second.
By Mary. Any further comments? Mary?
There is one thing that I just noticed. Under 6.7, what are those? 6.71, a yellow, and a 6.72, a process. Is that a mistake? I didn't see that before, and I apologize. It's, we're looking at...
I don't know if those are typos.
Yeah.
It's not either.
I don't think so. Okay, I'll, have a second, a motion in a second. So Mary? Second. Michael?
Hi.
Hi. Jonathan?
Hi.
Stacy?
Hi.
Enrique?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
That motion carries 7-0. Then we'll move on to policy 209, Code of Ethics. This is the same. Any changes that were made last time? There are no new changes. Do I have a motion to approve the Code of Ethics?
So made.
By Jonathan. Second?
Second.
By Michael. Any comments or questions?
I just one, I, the language looks to be the same. Can someone just confirm that I'm not, remember when we said the 209 had to match 203?
Yep.
And I believe that's the blue, correct?
Correct.
Okay. It looks like it, but I didn't do a word-to-word match. So other than that, I have no other comments.
Okay. So I have a motion in a second. Mary?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Hi. Jonathan?
Hi.
Stacy?
Hi.
Enrique?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
That motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Now we'll move on to letter D that was added tonight or changed. Policy 204, board member violation of policy. I'm looking for an update, and I'm gonna call on Stacy to maybe explain where you're at in your committee work, with the subcommittee for the, for this policy.
Well, we met last week, and I think we just wanted to come forward and just talk a little bit about, like, the framework in which we're doing and make sure that we're on the same path that people agreed upon. And feel free, Enrique and Mary, to chime in. But we looked, we're, we had some consensus around the multiple steps, having more step than the original four. So we kinda used some of those sample policies and went through and had sticks to, I think maybe even ended up to be seven steps, something like that. And then we talked also about having complaints being written. So there was consensus on that. But we just wanted to make sure that that was the path as to which people wanted to go about going forward, less procedural and more the step process, with it being kinda restorative and, I wanna say, educational. So we're gonna meet again, I think, on Wednesday. And then the plan, I think, is to bring forward, to talk in the, the study session on the, what is it, the 26th, with something that we, we, at least, well, everything that we have consensus on, we'll bring forward. And then if there's some different opinions, we'll bring those to that board and fully discuss, you know, which, which way it wants to go.
Can I add?
Mary or Enrique, do you have anything to add?
I was just gonna add that the version right now is pretty messy because of the markups on it. So on the 14th, we're gonna meet and clean it up. And then our goal was also to get it to the board earlier than just when the packet goes out for the study session, so everyone has more time to review it. And it's, it's not a surprise, that sort of thing, and then discuss it at the next study session.
Okay. Enrique, did you have anything to add?
Excellent summaries on both parts. Yeah, it was a great collaborative effort, and we think that this group will have a nice polished policy to move forward with. That, as Stacy already mentioned, that is intended to be more restorative and bring about corrective action for that board member, not so much admonition. So just kind of providing that overall general context of making sure that we are bringing that board member back into the fold with the hope that we don't ever have to use it.
Okay, right. And it doesn't get used much. So to summarize, the goal for the subcommittee is to meet again, to reach consensus on the policy, or at least parts of the policy that you feel you're comfortable with. And then you'll bring it forward to the work session where we can actually discuss it further with the intention that we will approve it on November 9th. So that was just an update. I wanted you to, all to know that, you know, they're still working on it. And we're gonna move forward so that we can move on to educating kids. Administrative reports. Dr. Stallow?
I don't have any further reports this evening. Thank you.
Administrative reports? They're all shaking their head no. Okay, board reports. Jonathan, do you have anything to report?
Nothing additional.
Michael?
Yes, I do wanna update the board on the work of the Engagement and Legislative Committee. We are working on a draft of a board resolution to address our commitment to safe, equitable, and inclusive schools. And what we're going to do after our initial draft here is to reach out to our parents, community members, staff, and students of color, get their insights and perspectives and feedback. And then we hope to bring that version of the draft forth to the full board at the study session, either on October 8th, or if we don't have that time to get the feedback, at the following study session in November.
Okay, Mary?
October 8th is already passed, so...
No, 28th, sorry. The mask, apologies.
Mary, did you have anything to report?
No, but I do wanna make a statement, and that's that I'm very happy that the financial numbers are now being produced as of March of 2019 in the board packets. So, and they're available to the public and available to all board members.
And they always have been?
No, they have not been. They didn't appear until then.
I beg to differ with you, Mary. We can talk about that later. But those numbers have always been available to the public, and they're always available to board members at any time. That's been the case since I've been on the board in 17 years. That hasn't changed. So we can discuss that separately if you want, but I disagree with you.
I have the data, the meeting minutes and everything like that of the work that took place. And furthermore, the comment that was made was not only misleading, it was also unnecessary in the beginning.
I'm sorry, what?
The comment that was made when we went over the consent agenda.
I'm stating a fact. I'm sorry, if you wanna discuss this offline, I will. But I'm not gonna have a discussion with you further about whether the finances have been present and made public, made available to the public or the board, because they always have been. So I'm not gonna have that argument with you any further. Do you have any other comments to make on another topic?
If you don't want to discuss it in public, no, then it, but I have the information to back that up.
And I have, I have contrary information to that, so we can have that discussion privately. Stacy, do you have anything to add?
No.
Enrique?
No, nothing to add. Thank you.
Melissa?
No.
Okay. I was at the FLYRPP meeting this past week. We got a good summary of what's been going on with the building in the district. We also had discussion on the upcoming football game on Friday night and all the logistics of that and the challenges with it. I think Russ Reitz has a good plan. He's had a lot of help in getting that organized, but I think that'll be going well. It sounds like he's got the changes made from volleyball as well, which he had a plan, and then it was changed by the High School League on short notice. So we discussed a little bit of that. And then I just wanted to say that I appreciate receiving the minutes from the subcommittees of the board, from facilities, curriculum, and community engagement. It's helpful to keep the board updated in that regard. So to those that are sending them, thank you. Future events? Abby? Oh, I'm sorry, Abby. I have no even here to ask you.
So we've had a lot going on at the high school. I mean, apart from what you guys are all discussing. On this past Thursday and Friday, we had a senior sunrise, which a lot of the other schools in our area in Minnesota have been doing with a lot of success. So basically, what happened was all the seniors were able to come out on their respective day, Group A, Group B, on Thursday and Friday, and sit and watch the sunrise together. And it was a really, it was just a fun little experience for the seniors, kind of a, something to brighten the hard senior year that we're all having. It was very successful. We had just under 100 kids between the two days, pretty evenly spread between those days. And we got a lot of positive feedback from all the seniors who were able to attend. So that was really awesome. Coming up, we have our Spirit Week coming on the week of October 26th. We're kind of centering it around, like, the Halloween time. And for people who don't celebrate Halloween, we have, I mean, it's not 100% Halloween aimed, but that's kind of what we're using to motivate students to participate, cuz we don't have a homecoming game or a homecoming week at all. So we're doing dress-up days. We're doing some sort of modified pancake breakfast. Still working out the kinks on that one, as eating is hard. I think that's, yeah. We're gonna livestream a Pet Fest to fourth-hour classrooms. We're gonna continue to do royalty and attempt to do coronation of some sort. So trying, trying to keep as many things as we can with any restrictions that we need to uphold. Lastly, Dr. Stallow and I, and one of, another student council member, Lily Dodge, have been working the past couple weeks, maybe a month now, on kind of brainstorming a student advisory board that would really just be an outlet for Dr. Stallow to kind of communicate directly with high school students. So the purpose statement, I don't, did you end up sending out the? Okay, so the purpose statement of this group that we came up with was to engage in dialogue with students, hear student perspectives, ask for input on district-wide initiatives and decisions, stay connected to students, and support student leadership as valued members of our school and community. So it's just, like I said, kind of a way to connect to, for Dr. Stallow to connect to more high school students and get more diverse perspectives. So in forming that group, we were able to send out a Google form on Schoology to 10th through 12th graders, kind of just to gauge interest. So we sent this out on Friday, and we already have about 20 responses from various students, all different, I mean, obviously, all different backgrounds, different experiences that are interested in being a part of this board, or advisory board. And unfortunately, I think we decided on about 12 students who will be a part of the board. We wanna keep it a smaller, more intimate group just so that all ideas can be heard and shared in a reasonable amount of time. We decided on having two sophomores, four juniors, and six seniors. And then both Dr. Stallow and I would also be there. And we're really just looking for as many perspectives as we can get our hands on. Yeah. That's kind of it.
Thank you. Sorry. Sorry I missed ya.
Okay. Moving on to future events. There is no school, E-12, October 14th to 16th for MEA. No school, also for the same grades, October 21st for staff in service. Our next school board meeting is a work session on October 26th at 6:00 here at the DSC. Just wanna thank those that helped get the technology tonight. Chelsea, Marcus, Martha, and Christie, and anybody else that helped you, because it all worked really well, and I could see everybody. So thank you for, it's always challenging, so thanks, especially with three board members on the screen. So with no other business that I see, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So made.
By Melissa, second?
Second.
Second.
Michael? Oh, shit, I can't. Mary? Michael?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Enrique?
Hi.
Stacy?
Hi.
That motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Thanks for being here.